All right, good evening everyone. We're gonna get started. Squeeze in, behind the feet, we're gonna be here a little while.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Council of the City Hall on Wednesday, January 30th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Global roll call, Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Moore.
President.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Arama.
Here.
As the record indicates, President's an active city manager, Michael Tagney, and Corporation Council, Robert Agostisi, without a solution to the problem.
What would you counsel, if you see what we do?
The flag of the United States of America. The republic of which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is a resolution appointing an active city manager as City Mayor.
All right, good evening everyone. I want to thank everyone for being here on such a bitter night. Especially, I want to thank Commissioner Tagney for being here while he's suffering through the flu. So, we do appreciate everyone being here. I'll start with how we got here this evening. So, everyone knows, we haven't had a permanent city manager in about a year now. We did go through a search. The finalist unfortunately failed our background check, so we decided to take another route. We looked into hiring a search firm, so there's been some talk of that in the media, and we did discuss that. We did not execute a contract with a search firm, although we did choose one, that we thought would suit our needs, and eventually, maybe in the future, they will. One of the council members did suggest we revisit appointing Rob Agostisi, and we all the council members met privately with Corporation Council, or with another council member, to discuss what we desire, and what we need, and what our vision of the city is. And that's how we get here with the resolution tonight. The reason for a special meeting, it's a couple of reasons. And this evening is a couple of reasons as well. So, this is really important, everybody knows that, it's probably the most important thing that'll happen this year. So, if we didn't have a regular council meeting, this would get swallowed up. And we just want to focus on this, it's that important that it gets its own night, much like the ZBA does, when the ZBA has a really big case before them, they do a special meeting. So, it's very similar to that. Also, keeps us focused on the topic at hand. This is it, one item, so. And then, there's some personal issues as well. Rob has a family obligation on February 5th, which would be our next meeting, so he cannot be there. So, in terms of planning with our...
Does he get a payout?
In terms of planning for the future, it just made sense to do a special meeting and to do it tonight. That gives us a break to Commissioner Tagney. Commissioner Tagney has been doing two jobs for one salary for over a year. He's labored with budgets, fiscal crisis, perpetual audits and reviews, all while supervising the police department. His exemplary service to the city over his entire 40-year career, and especially over the last year, never went unnoticed or unappreciated. His decision to forego the city manager's salary while performing two jobs resulted in substantial savings. Thank you. And more importantly, speaks volumes as to his character and commitment to the city. Nevertheless, it has become an unfair situation to the Commissioner, and we've reached a position where we now must address it. Adding to the urgency is the police department lost one of its longtime lieutenants in October, and just another one today, who had a retirement. So, congratulations to Lieutenant Stark, who retired today with an exemplary career. Those two retirements have resulted in a managerial void that we need the Commissioner to fill immediately, and that's another reason for today's special meeting. Ideally, we'd have liked to ease Commissioner Tagney's burden earlier, but the simple reality is that we need him. With that said, we also feel obligated to allow Commissioner Tagney to return to a job where he has served a distinction for more than 40 years. Commissioner Tagney, on behalf of the city, I thank you for your incredible dedication and service to the city, and let's hear Rob's applause. We'll hold a standing ovation for him on February 5th. So, Rob's tenure, Rob's been here for over 12 years, and he's been through a lot with the city. He's been a part of a lot of what has happened behind the scenes that most folks don't even know about. He's been assistant Corporation Counsel since 2006, he's worked with four different city managers, many council members, multiple administrations. Initially, he came from a national management side law firm, and took a significant pay type money, accepted city employment, which is something he did again during the 2018 budget process. He graduated from Hofstra, and he's also graduated from SUNY Albany Business School. He served as the president of the New York City Chapter of Labor Employment Relations Association, and vice president of the Labor Employment Law Committee in the Nassau County Bar Association. So, some of the characteristics why we know that Rob is gonna excel at this job. The first thing that stands out is his measured and diplomatic approach to people and problem-solving. The work he's performed through multiple administrations, consisting of very different people, from very different political parties, highlights a key trait that's common among successful leaders, which is the ability to work with a cross-section of people and advance the organization's interests. After having worked with Rob for many years now, I can assure you that Rob is the person in City Hall who we know, and as a collective representative, will put the city's interests first. I've seen this, we've all witnessed this on countless occasions, and he does it in different ways. Some of his successes are high-profile, and we're gonna discuss them. Moral to the knot, however, it's the little things, which never become big things, that the public doesn't see that sets them apart. So, I'm just gonna run through some of the accomplishments that we may or may not know, and Rob's part in those items. So, I ask you for your patience, but this is important that everyone knows this stuff. A recent example of this is the access agreement that the city recently signed with LEO Executive Towers. That allowed the Army Corps to enter a small privately-owned liberal land within the city's boundaries, and was needed to complete the Doom project. After learning of the issue for the first time over the summer, and under a lot of pressure from the DEC and the Army Corps, Rob waited for the town to have spent assigning the agreement with LEO Towers before acting. In other words, he waited to see what LEO Towers was willing to concede before giving away any city concessions. That in turn allowed Rob to incorporate those concessions into a final deal, that also layered in a critical concession that only someone with Rob's institutional knowledge would know in advance. That's a key phrase there, right, institutional knowledge. Specifically, he insisted that in any legal action to acquire the land, which is acquired under the city's deal with the DEC and the Army Corps, LEO Towers could only recover the value of land situated within the city, not the town. In other words, it prevented LEO Towers from ever suing the city to recover the assembled value of the properties needed to construct the Dunes. Assembled value is exactly what the prior owners of the super block recovered from the city for their separate parcels, and what led to the super block surcharge that currently appears on all passports. That was a $20 million judgment, and Rob took the steps needed to ensure that history would repeat itself. Again, only Rob would have known about the assembled value and request such an item in the beginning of the negotiations. Other examples of Rob's recent contributions include his absorption of the critical infrastructure bulkhead project, which resembles a jigsaw puzzle. For all intents and purposes, Rob has become the point person on this project, monitoring benchmarks from the internal staff, and applying just the right amount of pressure on outside agencies when the opportunities are less. This project is gonna be a game changer for the city, and it's probably one of the biggest regional projects that's coming to happen. The same goes for the planning of the sewer consolidation with Nassau County, which is most challenging and complex, and the largest transactions that the city has ever accounted. That's gonna be of regional benefit, and probably one of the biggest in New York State when we get that done, and Rob's gonna point in on that. And he developed a plan to advance it this year. These are the things that the public only catches a glimpse of, but never really fully sees. The trait which sets Rob really apart is his natural shepherding the city through matters of crisis. As Rob likes to remind us, first month at Corporation Counsel was the super block decision, which instructed us to pay a formal property owner $20 million in damages, the revelation that Istar was seeking $128 million pilot, and the fire department restructuring. And one month later, the Haberman default judgment decision. These intractable problems have plagued the city for generations, and each of them seemed to come in ahead right when Rob became Corporation Counsel. It was his job to steer us through these things and handle his regular assistant Corporation Counsel case load because he had never placed himself. Although, we can't really discuss each as much as I'd like to, for obvious legal implications, but it's important to highlight Rob's contributions. I just have a couple more, so please bear with me. As many of you know, the city recently notched a pivotal victory in the Istar litigation. Through cases handled exclusively by Corporation Counsel, the ZBA's decision to rescind Istar building's permit was upheld. Now, Istar is in a position on their $100 million lawsuit against the city, where they need to show damages on the project that they're no longer permitted to build. That's not to say the litigation is over, however, what the public may not realize is this decision is the end result of a contingency plan that Rob developed in 2015. In the event, things were sideways with Istar's pilot, which, as we know, did. So, on one hand, Rob was tasked with trying to reduce the amount of size and scope of the pilot without killing the project altogether. His planning and legal defense in the cases, in case it didn't work out. And because of several other tactical maneuvers, things have taken a very different turn, and we're expecting more positive developments in the near future. Then, there are other things I mentioned, such as the fire department restructuring. It's probably not a secret that Rob ran a point on this project as well. And here's how it ultimately turned out. The city followed through with changing the nature and composition of the department. We now have internal pre-deployed paramedics who run the first two ambulance, and have decreased the city's initial EMT response time by the first two ambulance to under five minutes. That's a remarkable accomplishment. We both took and layered paramedic protection by incorporating the three backup services through South Nassau Community Hospital, all the while, perhaps, most remarkably, since the fire department was restructured in 2015, it is the only city, the only department in the city that operates, its operating expenses has decreased, year after year. While head-to-head pension contributions continue to skyrocket, that department is the only one where expenses has decreased, and we thank the fire department for working with us to attain those savings for the community. There's not much I can say about Haberman litigation, as the damages trial is currently scheduled for the spring. Suffice it to say that Rob has been fighting his way off the ropes ever since he inherited the matter when he became Corporation Counsel. Through that span, he's absorbed the blows, but has gradually battled back to the point where the city has actually been able to land some considerable punches in recent months. This is due to a reevaluation legal strategy, which Rob has spearheaded, along with the contributions of the city's experts, which took approximately six months to find and retain. Of all the legal matters affecting the city, this one's obviously the most immediate and pressing, and things are evolving very quickly. What I can say is that the council knows the action plan, and that the city has been put in the best possible position to emerge from this case in a manner that is designed to assure our viability as a city. There's also some jury trial stuff that Rob has spearheaded, that Councilwoman Diamond had wanted to discuss.
Earlier, we mentioned a number of different cases that Rob has worked on in his capacity as Corporation Counsel or assistant Corporation Counsel, but often, Rob is called upon to defend the actions of our employees, whether it be our police or other employees who act in their capacity as members of our workforce. In November 2016, Rob worked in the city in a federal jury trial. This was a police false arrest and excessive force case, where the city was forced to admit going into the trial that it had unfortunately mistakenly arrested the incorrect person. The exposure to the city in this case was estimated to be anywhere between $1.5 million on the low end and $3 million on the higher end. And here is what happened. The city wanted to first complete jury verdict in a generation. The verdict was groundbreaking in another way as well, which is the first time the city in its history had a city Corporation Counsel try a case through the entire litigation through a verdict. It also bears mentioning of his adversary, who's probably one of the best well-known civil rights attorneys in Long Island. I can only describe Rob's efforts on this matter as a result of his speaks for himself. I would just say that his ability to juggle this jury verdict trial, which all the attorneys in the room know is no easy task, this while not letting anything slip through the office and any of the other cases or matters fall behind, and never missed a beat. Shortly before this jury verdict, earlier that same year, Rob helped to recover millions of dollars in back taxes during the Allegra Festival, and we're thrilled to say that the hotel is finally current and up to date. More impressively, however, Rob managed to achieve something truly extraordinary that year. He figured out a way to recover millions from Nassau County interviros on LEO sewer district, without engaging the county in litigation or any other municipality. Rob remains steadfast in his belief that the city must avoid suing another municipality or government agency except as met as a measure of last resort, and that has been his approach to cases up until today. He recognized the city's long-term interest in intergovernmental collaboration, which you see in a number of programs and projects that we have undertaken over the last few years. On the other hand, he also understands that the city cannot be taken advantage of in its dealings with other municipalities. So, how does he make those two policies and its needs? In this case, he waited for the county to need the city for something. The county needed the city to enter into the first draft of an intermunicipal agreement on the sewer consolidation project, which we've talked about a number of times, and President Arama just recently discussed. In other words, he held his intermunicipal agreement out as a carrot, and made the county reimburse the city before entering into another draft intermunicipal agreement. Considering the level of pressure that both the county and the city received with respect to this project, and it was a massive project and a regional project, this was pretty astute, that accomplished two major goals simultaneously. This is a great example of the subtle effective advocacy that the public doesn't necessarily see, but from which the city benefits greatly on a daily basis in some of these large-scale projects. I'll just send it back to you.
Thank you. No, not the insurance recovery. Lastly, we need to discuss Rob's efforts after Superstorm Sandy. It's easy to see and therefore appreciate the contributions of our first responders. It's not as easy, however, to see what the attorneys are doing behind the scenes. In this case, because of what the other attorneys were dealing with in his office, Rob was assigned to handle the city's insurance claim against this property carrier. What Rob did was work literally around the clock to assemble a team of experts led by him to evaluate over 40 city properties, which was a zone-warming task. The end result was the full payment of the policy's flood of $10 million, within 30 days of storm. Now, six years later, we all know what it's like to deal with huge property claims against insurance carriers. In the timeframe of which Rob managed to achieve this victory was incredible, especially considering that Rob does not practice in the field. He has to learn on the fly, and more importantly, figure out how to deploy it. I can't overstate the importance of this cash infusion, which literally kept the lights on until help started to arrive from the state and federal government. This is the money we use as a down payment on all the other cleanup and repair contracts. We could not have done it without this cash. Relatively, something I know Rob considers among his professional highlights is the separate lawsuit that he commenced against the carrier for business interruption costs, a claim which the carrier initially denied. Before breaking the suit, Rob actually shot the case around to several law firms, none of which expressed interest because they didn't see the value in taking it on contingency. But Rob insisted that there was ambiguity in the policy and could be exploited, and decided to handle it internally. Suffice it to say, about two years into the case, the city recovered an additional $800,000, and I think the reason why Rob likes to highlight that is because he saw value where no one else did. And as we all know, he was right. There's also now immensely popular sewer lateral program, which was triggered by the federal lawsuit that was projected to cost the city between $7 and $10 million in fines. It certainly wasn't popular at the time, but it is now. The case has settled for $0, and now people have a program, which Rob rolled out, in which they can opt out at any given year. Put differently, he replaced the tax increase with an optional fee, which also helps to clean our waterways and reduce sewage treatment costs. In fact, our treatment has been reduced by nearly 20% in the last several years because of various citizen initiatives, the sewer lateral program among them. The sewer lateral program provides a good segue to highlight the current theme of Rob's employment. He plays the long game. He understands that fraud initiatives may be unpopular at first, and he has the willing to shoulder the criticisms when he feels that the long-term benefits justify the short-term headaches. So, many of the situations that I've discussed and Councilwoman Diamond discussed today were either misunderstood or wildly unpopular when Rob started working on it. However, he prioritizes a few key objectives, the most important things, and somehow manages to land the plane every single time, and that's no small feat. He disdains fluff, he focuses on projects and problems that stand to make a meaningful difference in people's lives. We're confident, I'm confident, that that approach, because of the results we've seen. That's why we're also confident that he's the right person for the job. He has been here for a dozen years, he has spent more time in this building than anyone, except possibly Commissioner Tagney, but retains objectivity to run the city and make the right decisions. He certainly has my support. So, I tried to make it as short as I could, but unfortunately, I couldn't because this list of accomplishments of what he's done for the city goes on and on and on, and I think having most of the city workforce here tonight speaks volumes. So, with that, I'll take, unless any council member wishes to speak, I'll take the public comment.
Mike?
John? Hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Why did all the council members not meet together to discuss this?
We've all met privately with Rob.
Was that the way we conducted the process for the candidates?
We did interview council, we did interview Rob Agostisi when the initial process started.
And the other candidates, did we individually meet with the other candidates, or did we do that together?
I had individual conversations with some of the other candidates.
You had conversations because you set up so many interviews. When we did the actual interview...
Look, John, you met with Rob Agostisi in East Atlantic Beach privately, just like we all had had conversations in private. That's how it works.
No, that's not how it works. We talked to him, we get input from him, we asked our questions of him. Then, we as a council get together and discuss him as a candidate...
Okay.
...and try to come to a consensus.
We do have consensus. At the last council meeting, and privately in the city manager's office, you made it quite clear that you cannot support Rob Agostisi. So, you made it quite clear, you negotiated in bad faith, so we moved on.
Forget procedure. Yeah, forget about procedure.
Backdoor deals on garbage.
I'm sorry, if there's gonna be actors like that, we're gonna have to ask you to leave. So, please, let's be civil.
If this is the way he chooses to conduct the process, then who opposed him?
And how do you choose to conduct the process? Come on.
So, why did you not advise all the city council members in advance that there was a special meeting being called?
I sent out the notice on Monday morning.
I found out about the meeting when I got a call from the Herald asking me to comment on it.
Well, you must not check your email, because we all actually got notified by Mr. Frazier through the...
I got an email from the city clerk at 9:01 a.m.
You made it clear that you do not support private...
I got an email from the city clerk at 9:01 a.m. announcing the meeting. You gave a press release to the press earlier that morning that was thought out, that was prepared. So, you knew about the meeting, other council members knew about the meeting, you withheld that information from some of the council members. Why?
Just you, John. You oppose Rob Agostisi, you've made it clear throughout the entire year.
Can't leave Mount Hill Council.
And he was notified legally and properly. If you want to be opposition, then you will be opposition.
All of us.
All of us.
Yes, please.
You know, Mr. Bendo, we were in negotiations, just to be clear, we met in the presence of the witness, right? And the way I learned those negotiations were over was at the January 15th meeting, when you started to announce, without any authority, I might add, that you're hiring a search firm. So, we both respect you, Mr. Bendo, when you're writing negotiations, if you actually hear you're when you're negotiating in good faith, we're here. But understand something, when you're negotiating badly, don't complain about being excluded from the majority. Because this is how, this is how we negotiate, not... You know something over the past year? I think I did everything I possibly could to facilitate it, and I hope you reach out and understand.
So, we're writing history now, so now the council did not agree to hire the executive search firm?
The council didn't make that decision. It was...
You negotiated the price down on the contract, and the contract's been sitting on the active city manager's desk since December 20th, waiting to be signed, when we had all talked about it and said we were moving ahead with the executive search firm.
When the council makes an agreement, Mr. Bendo, that happens in the form of a resolution. Other ones are the city managers, the termination, that's all.
Just for point of information, we had a conference call as a council on December 14th to discuss the actual search firm, governed in H.R. That was the last conversation that we had, and it was my understanding, and we also said this here in this room, that we were moving forward with that search firm.
And at the meeting, a couple meetings ago, I had tried for that, I had sent the questionnaire from the search firm for the objectives that the council had that wanted to see in the candidate. Now, one council person has gotten back to me with it, so I can't sign the contract, I can't bail out the contract without the adequate information.
And Councilwoman Moore, that's the same meeting, the December 14th meeting, is the meeting where you floated the idea of revisiting appointing Rob Agostisi as active city manager.
Right. We all, we had conversations about all of the finalists, not just the only individual person. What I'm saying is...
But we're here today.
The conference call exists, and we have to acknowledge what he's saying. In other words, we all want to move this forward, but we don't have to tax each other to do it.
Yes, all options on the table, and Rob Agostisi was brought back up at that meeting, just like the search firm was this...
just like the search firm was this time.
Right. But the search firm, it was my understanding that we forward with that search firm, which is why it fell into the hands of our acting city manager. So now we're hearing a different story.
No, I'm consistent. But why not have a search firm if we were going to move forward, which is one of all the negotiations privately we will have with Rob?
It didn't happen on the 14th, and it didn't happen on the 20th. So the question is then, has the search for city manager had an action been officially closed? That is the question. Consulting Corporation Council addressed upon this, has the search for city manager had actually been officially closed? That's just standard procedure. I just need to know that.
It's not really a question for the council, it's the city council's search.
Which cannot happen until the questionnaire returns.
Well, but I think the issue, if I can understand what your question is, whether we actually finished the search. I think as Tomlinn Aramo said, he had gone through the search. There was a number of finalists. We came to a conclusion that the one that we initially believed was going to be our choice was not... We believed that it ended up being not the appropriate person that we all had agreed to together. And then we spoke about a number of different options. One of them was Rob. One of them was the search firm. I think we kind of pursued both of them at the same time, if I remember some of those discussions. And then, I mean, we're here now. We've noticed the meeting. So, some of us have made the decision that this is in the best interest of the city, whether it be timing, whether it be Rob's history with the city and his qualifications. There's a variety of...
The qualifications are not in question right now. This is about standard procedure. Have we officially closed the search for city manager? Being that we are, according to this resolution, moving forward to appoint him as acting city manager.
To the extent...
So we had an existing search, and a part of that process is you have to officially close that search. Have the candidates who were part of that entire search process, have they been notified that this search has been officially closed? That's just standard procedure.
I don't know why we would do that until we've actually made our selection. I think we would need to do that after we have a selection. Until that time, until we actually select a candidate and the person's in the position and a vote takes place, then how do we know that the search is...
But we need to do that officially. Either we're saying officially as a city that the search remains open, or we're saying that as of today, we've closed the search. Either way, we still have to notify all the people who are on that list, who actually interviewed, those who interviewed, and also those who submitted their resumes, so that they know, so that we do not open ourselves up for liability.
I don't think there's any disagreement that once the search is over, we can direct the acting city manager to send out letters.
Okay, but we said that several months ago, that we were going to send letters out for those individuals who did not complete, who did not make it to the final stage. Did that ever happen?
If I recall the conversations regarding those letters, it was once we made our selection, we would send out the letters. It would be premature to send out letters saying our search is over when we didn't have our final candidate. When we, even when we were down to one candidate. Our search is not over until a background check is completed and a person is appointed.
When you apply for a job and you're not one of the finalists, you receive a nice letter. So where's the letter, George?
All right, well, I mean, as far as the concern is doing the pass, the search is over. It's all considered.
Rob Agostecy, have you read the job description for the city manager?
Sure.
Do you believe you meet the qualifications in that job description? Mr. Bendo, let's get some...
I'm not here for cross-examination today.
No cross-examination.
I'm happy to discuss anything you'd like to discuss. But if you think you're going to ambush me, that's not going to happen.
You're ambushin' us.
So if you have a point you'd like to make, why don't you? But there's no, there's not going to be any cross-examination, Mr. Bendo.
So, your qualifications do not apply?
Mr. Bendo, I'm just saying to say that...
I think that, Mr. Bendo, I think that we've all reviewed the qualifications for the position, and we've all made, and some of us have made a determination that we believe that Rob is the most appropriate choice, given all the things that Tomlinn and Aramo listed, as well as our understanding of the qualifications.
You changed it at the beginning.
But he...
Wait a second. I have a question.
Hold on. I understand that you have a question, but let me finish. I'll let you finish. But I think that too, it is unfair on a number of different levels to sit here and engage in an interview with Rob when you've had an opportunity to do that a number of times, both privately with him, with other members of the council. I believe there were three levels of interview. So it would seem that it's a little bit out of the ordinary to engage in that discussion here.
That's fine. Your opinion is noted. If you don't want to answer my question, you can just say so. So one of the major issues facing the city right now, probably the top issue, is our fiscal situation. And the requirement in the job description is expertise in municipal finance and finance administration. Can you please discuss or tell us about your experience in this area?
Well, that's a good question. You're talking about job description, Mr. Bendo. Or job description. That's not the official description on file. So the service, that's not what's in the chart.
But that's the posting that was put up for the candidates that want to start.
Kind of, but one moment ago, you just represented that as part of the job description, and that's not actually the case. That's part of a job posting, Mr. Bendo.
And this is the job posting?
You know, you asked me a question. I like it.
You're an obfuscation...
I don't think this is obfuscation at all. I'm trying to answer directly. With respect to your position, I've been here for 12 years, and I have a more than functional understanding of how this budget works. And more importantly, I think I know all the characters and all the players and how the whole scheme works together. So, I believe I'm a really sensitive to answer your question directly. However, I'm just free to disagree.
You received a $128,000 separation payment that was not in accordance with the city co-avoidances and is currently being investigated by the...
Mr. Bendo, that's what we call, that's what we call leading questions, in my view. So, no one's making that admission. In fact, that's an issue. That just happens to be your interpretation misguided of the city code. I don't know where you got the lawyer, Mr. Bendo, but you should return the money.
So you're saying that your payment was in line with what the code requires?
No, Mr. Bendo, that's what you're saying. I can't talk about a personnel matter anymore. All I'm saying is that your interpretation leaves much to be desired of the city people.
So was your payment.
I think that it's important to note that the comptroller investigation is still pending. As far as I know, there's a report that's been received of an analysis of whether the payouts were or were not appropriate. I think we all fall for it when there was an issue and a question with regards to the payout. Every, I think it has been made clear a number of times. I know that I've said it in a number of different meetings, that Rob had accepted a position to leave and go to another municipality. It was the beginning of the year. We had our city manager at the time leaving as well. And I supported and strongly advocated that we convince Rob to stay and keep the position, given that we're faced with a number of different lawsuits, one of which is going to trial on damages within the next few months. And it didn't seem appropriate for me that we would leave our corporation counsel. So we asked him to please stay after he had already been received a payout. Whether you leave that inappropriate payout or not, I think that it's unfair to make a distinction that he somehow received money and there's no explanation for it. He was leaving and taking a position with another municipality. And I, for one, am thankful that he made the decision to stay when we would have been in a position where our comptroller had left, our city manager had left, and then we would lose our corporation counsel as we're entering the number one in the city as a city that is nearly in power. So, to the extent that I don't think it's fair to categorize it just simply, he was leaving his employment with the city. And until such time as we have the investigation of what the comptroller's office, I think it's unfair to just categorize it as an inappropriate payout to the extent that it is. We would figure out how to deal with it then, and I think we made that very clear.
Which...
You just did characterize it.
Am I categorizing the payment as cynical? He's entitled, he's entitled to receive a payment that he's leaving for approved benefits in accordance with code laws. What's in question is the amount. That's what's in question, not the payment itself, the amount. So, we're not going to address that here. People heard what they, I guess they need to hear, and we will move on.
The comptroller's office is doing an independent audit, and I believe that once we have that report, the court answer will be there.
I think I'd like to just add also to Councilwoman Diamond's remarks. You know, Rob was leaving, and we lured him back with a raise. And then he gave it back. I don't know of anyone that's done that, but when the true level of our fiscal position was revealed through the budget process, Commissioner Taggins did an outstanding job. Rob gave back his raise. And I think that's important and worth noting.
I'll actually go a little further. He did give back, and it was a $25,000 raise. It was not insignificant.
It was not.
It was not. And he did give it back, and he does deserve credit for that. So... The resolution calls you to hold two positions, acting city manager and corporation counsel. You are the chief executive and the chief legal officer of the city. Is that a conflict of interest? Is there supposed to provide checks on each other? And if so, how would that be mitigated?
I don't know if checks is the appropriate term. The corporation counsel would be applying as an acting city manager, to be sure. The way the charter is structured is such that you have to be, if you're an acting city manager, you have to be an administrative officer of the city and apply for a partner. And during the appointment, and I am because I run the office of corporation counsel. For those situations that we are conflicted with develop, which is theoretical, and I do grant you that, fortunately, we have a number of different directions that we can go. I'm very, very lucky, I'm very fortunate, to have the best staff. Anyone, any supervisor can never ask for an office of corporation counsel. And the other attorneys in my office are ready to step up. And occasionally, we might have to have some sort of decision to answer your question. I don't anticipate that happening very often, but that could be a possibility.
In the article that was out there about this, it said that, you said you didn't need to reside in Long Beach as acting city manager. Who made that determination?
That's pursuant to the charter. There is something in the charter with respect to residency that only for the city manager. And I know this topic was visited in 2012, when that residency requirement was added because I was aware that it was written. And we intentionally did not include a requirement for acting city manager because you could be in a position where the role suddenly became vacant, whether resignation, death, you may, and the city could be in a position where you had to bring in the most qualified person immediately, without delay, in order to ensure the continuity of government. That was the thought process at the time, and that's why there is no residency requirement for the acting city manager.
On Monday, in that press release that stated what you had said, what you're going to see in the coming weeks is the city council now will be rolling out a wide-ranging plan, not only to address what we see as priorities of the city as yet, but also an action plan to meet the challenges that we've identified. Have you discussed a plan with city council members?
Only, to date, only in an offhand manner. Certainly, you know, I don't have any presumptions, and I'll wait for the vote before that plan gets rolled out.
All right, so you did discuss it with all the council members on an individual basis?
Yep, that's correct.
You also said in that same article that if the council's pleased with your job performance over the course of a year, and the council wants to retain you, you know, you've been indicated, you're open to that. How long do you anticipate being in an acting role?
I don't know that I'm anticipating anything at the moment. Right now, the only thing I'm truly anticipating is the council evaluating my performance over the course of the year, and we'll play it from there.
Okay, so you basically, at the end of the calendar year, you expect some kind of decision to be made?
Yeah, I think that's very safe. It's my expectation.
All right, I think I think more than that. All right, this audience will be the question.
I just want to, just want to follow up on a few things. Just my recollection of what happened and how we wound up here tonight. In mid-December, I was approached by one of the council members that told me three of the council members were interested in revisiting Rob Agostecy to be appointed as acting city manager. At that point, that was right around the December 14 date. I was not present when whatever meeting took place with Mr. Bendo originally set, whatever he said about Mr. Agostecy, so I can't comment on that one way or the other. But I can tell you is, after December 14th, I met with certain council members, I met with Mr. Agostecy. I advised that Mr. Bendo met with Mr. Agostecy, Mr. Moore, Melvin, Mr. Aramo, Mr. Diamond. Everybody did their due diligence. I understand the need for the special meeting tonight. Commissioner Taggins did a fantastic job. Really, not celebrated enough. Ushered us through both budget season and the summer season, which is all like in Long Beach. My understanding of tonight is not the hiring of a city manager, and I think we're conflating two different processes. Tonight is continuing the role of the acting city manager. We have a wonderful resident here in Long Beach, Commissioner Taggins, who took on the role, not because he wanted it, but because we made him. He didn't get the option of saying no. He ultimately didn't get the option of getting the salary. At this point, he is desperately needed back at the police department. We have to continue that role, and we have to find somebody who has the same institutional knowledge and the same professional responsibility for this city. That's Rob Agostecy. I came to that conclusion, speaking directly to Rob. It's my understanding that other council members also spoke directly with him, and any questions they had, just like the questions I had, I answered at that time. I'm kind of confused that there's still some questions that need to be vetted. My understanding was, this wasn't a secret. This wasn't something that was done behind closed doors. Three council members came to me with this. At that point, three council members had already vetted him. I was at the end of the process. So I'm a little confused as to why we're looking into things beyond the acting city manager role. There's no talk about a contract being awarded tonight. There's nothing about him taking on any additional responsibilities outside of the position of Taggins, as done as acting city manager. So I just want to make sure we're following the spirit of what that is supposed to be, and we're not misunderstanding of history that got us here. So I just wanted to add. Thanks.
I need to add then, because I'm very troubled by some of the behavior that I'm witnessing tonight on these days. I don't even think we should vote now. I think we should go upstairs and try to work some things out before we make decisions based on emotion. But at any rate, I want to kind of take some of the people through the process. There are a lot of people here tonight, and I need to give you the context of how we got here in terms of the timetable. That timetable is something that all of us have looked at, and I think this will pretty much help you in terms of some of the questions that are here. But I also feel that I need to make a statement of seasoning because, again, I was also under attack with respect to the search process. So, for many of you, you know that on January 2016, that we came together as a community to really light the fire to change for our local city government. It's not a secret that I have sat alone for the majority of the three years in the outside. As a top vote getter, I was told that you need more experience, but I'm the only person that doesn't have a communication degree. Without three, without the three votes, my motions have been systematically blocked, tabled, my contributions to this city have been pretty much ignored. City workers right here in this room have been afraid to stand next to me and take photos with me for the fear of retaliation, because you can't be labeled a more supporter. Retaliation is too great. For the past three years, I have watched Newsday, as well as local news media outlets, walk by me after a city council meeting because I'm invisible. Yes, I have been called, and I was called several times by John Asher on several occasions, and I was also misquoted by Asher. One, to either support the city's agenda or to completely discredit me. However, you may remember, way back when, in 2016, I challenged by asking questions about the Channel Park housing bedbugs. And from that time, Newsday would not quote anything with the words "I need some more" in it. However, on Monday evening, this attack tops it off. I thought on July 3rd of 2018 that that... I thought on July 3 of 2018 that that was enough, when actually, when Bendo and I came into this building, the city hall, right after the whole bond vote, we were locked out of the fifth floor conference rooms. However...
Wow.
Driving to work, my Facebook notifications were flying off the hook on Monday. Going to disturb, when I reached the parking lot, there was a quote from Anisa Moore who was featured in Newsday. Anisa Moore in Newsday? Why now at 2019? Why all of a sudden do I have a voice? When I have never been given the opportunity to speak for this council or for the past councils, the answer is never the fake news. So I lamented all day, knowing that my character was assassinated in Newsday as well as social media. Why? Because the article refused to misuse my credibility to support the majority. If I'm not good enough to speak for you from 2016 to 2019, then why am I good enough to speak for you now? I was never even considered, and remember in 2018, no one gave me support in terms of leadership. I wasn't even considered to be a pseudo vice president. Now, in 2018, if we're all fair, the reason why we're asking all these questions up here is the fact that the council only met four times in 2018 under President Aramo and Vice President Taggins' leadership. That's why there's all of these questions being asked. We're not trying, at least for myself, I'm not trying to attack Mr. Agostecy or anyone up here, but I have to tell you the facts so you understand why we are where we are right now. So please bear with us because we have to work this out as a city. And so the search for the city manager started the same way. Some of you were here, I motioned that we establish a time reference, four months, for acting city manager Taggins, because we understood that it was a burden for him to do two jobs. I remember sharing during that council meeting that, again, I had participated in national searches, I'm currently participating in a national search. Once again, my expertise was ignored, the motion was tabled. Now, that brings us to the timeline. Here's the timeline. And his formal interview with Mr. Agostecy was conducted on January 8 of 2018. Okay? The only person that was not present because of a family commitment was actually Councilman Mendel. On March 21st, five finalists, five, were selected from the candidates pool. The council agreed to conduct telephone interviews with out-of-state candidates, again, March 21st. All right, on March 28th, two phone interviews were conducted. On April 4th, one person came into the office, was interviewed, again, all of us were present. On April 15th, however, two candidates were interviewed via Skype. The candidates were identified as finalists. That brings us to the fact that it wasn't until June 13 of 2018 that we met with Mr. Agostecy, because at this time, he had been identified as a finalist. It was not until December 14th, when the conference call was held with many of the people who were right here on this dais, we had a conversation with government, GOVHR, which was the executive search firm. That is a conversation that we would move forward with this search firm. Now, that brings us to where we are right now. I have witnessed a year of failed opportunities for us to obtain a city manager during this search process. Yes, the council established several finalists, outcomes were unsuccessful, but again, that was in 2018. After endless conversations and ongoing discussions, it became obvious to me that my colleagues had no intention of moving forward with the search firm as proposed by Councilman Bendo. That's when everything kicked in, because it became, once again, January 3rd. Therefore, I felt, as a member of this council, it was my duty to try to move the city forward. I did believe at that time that we could move forward. With the hopes of moving forward, I actually emailed the following words to Mr. Agostecy or the other members of the council. That would be our theme for this year. Focus forward. Stability, accountability, renewed purpose. I did send those words because I believed that we can move forward, and I still believe those words now. But those words were left out of Newsday. So why was I single down? Oh, because it's 2019, it's election year. Oh, that's right. The most recent action was cold and calculated, cast a dark shadow on Anisa Moore once again to discredit her with the people. The system, which is corrupt, tried to use my loss for the people in this city against me to destroy my political future in the city of Long Beach, to elevate someone else for the city's sake? So before we vote on anything, why would I support a plot that was devised to actually destroy me? How are we going to move forward? I want to move forward, and I want to vote with the best of my ability, but the games keep being played, and I'm tired of the game.
That's right.
How can we move the city forward if we have not addressed the past? How can we grow as a council and unite our city if the foundation is not built on integrity? Counsel, I need to know, are we going to stop playing the game? People are suffering throughout our entire city while we play. People are drinking groundwater right here in city hall, and they don't have a heat because we're playing a game. We've got to move forward tonight. I have to say that. So while Mr. Taggins successfully helped the city achieve our budget and do so much more that we can't even list tonight because of time, we have another issue here. The overtime spending has exponentially increased. Again, our silence is betrayal to the very people that we serve. How many more people are going to be hired? How many poor alowes are going to have to wait to move from $10 to $15 because the paperwork is still sitting somewhere since last summer? Does anybody out here care? That's the question. When is the bleeding going to stop? The hemorrhaging has to stop. And I believe now, we need to put all of our differences aside, we need to build on this year, but we can't build if we don't address all the self-interest, the deception, the betrayal, and the lies. We can't move forward. Where is the apology to this public regarding the failed search? We failed them. Before we vote, two questions. Mr. Agostecy, can you stop the hemorrhaging? How will you restore the public's trust in government? People have been waiting in this room and outside for over 40 years. The corruption has to stop. President Aramo, you convinced me at the beginning of this year that we will do whatever we need to do together to move this city forward, and I'm still with you on that. So again, how can we use the opportunity right now to make this right? We have to do right by these people. Enough is enough. And for the record, whatever happens tonight, you can isolate me again, you can attack me on social media, you can keep meeting before the meeting on the fourth floor, but I'm committed to fighting a good fight for all the people in this room. They are reminding me that when I speak, regardless of even if it's not my words, that people listen. And because of that, I'm going to keep speaking truth to power until we bring change to this city and change your policy. What are we going to do right now to put all of our differences aside, to move this city forward and move forward? What are we going to do? Overtime sheets, I only brought two of them, but here it is. Okay, time sheet, 12/27/18 to 1/09/19. $120,000. Before that, $117,000. Because in the end, you're going to come back and ask me, what happened? Where did we, how did we get here? We can stop this now, tonight, by moving forward with a vote that we all agree on. Let's stop it, and let's fight it out together.
Councilwoman Moore, I think that a number of the issues that you raised, one of the things that we decided in some of our discussions, whether it was individually or when the three of us spoke or four of us spoke, was that we believed that Rob, because of his experience with the city, as well as the fact that he could step in day one and really kind of hit the ground running and get to begin to learn a system, that that was a way to address some of the structural issues, some of the issues that we, each of us have, as well as each of our priorities. We each have individual priorities as well as collective priorities. We've discussed whether it be just the two of us or as a group, with some members being there or not, that each of us does have those things that we wanted to do, and that we believe this was the first step, and that Rob did have the ability, given that he's worked closely with the controllers' office, that he's worked closely with some of our rating agencies, that he's worked close with all of the different department heads in his capacity as corporation council, he's worked with union leaders, as well as all the different levels of government. I think that we will be together, that he was the most appropriate person to address some of those issues and be able to address them quickly as we enter a budget season where we know there's a difficult balance that we're all going to have to work together to address, which is what we did last year as well. So I believe that that answers the...
What are we going to do?
We are going to take this vote, and hopefully it's successful, and we can begin immediately to address the priorities that we each set forth. Some of them are the same, and some of them, each of us have our own individual things that we...
Right, but Mr. Agostecy will be clear about his promises in terms of what he's going to do and the leadership skills that he brings. But what are we going to do to support that? If we are, once again, not united as a council, how can we support anything in moving forward? If we're still having secret meetings, how can we move forward? We have to make a commitment to each other to move this city forward.
I don't know what secret meetings you were referring to. I'm not aware of secret meetings that take place. You and I have had a number to discuss in particular about this item, about this vote. I don't, you've referred to these secret meetings in the past, I just don't know what you're talking about.
We don't call it a secret meeting, you just call it a prompt meeting.
I don't have the language. I mean, when we arrive at places, people speak to each other, I don't consider that a meeting.
Just touching on that, an issue about meetings. If there were meetings that took place, you mentioned some of the fourth floor, I certainly wasn't there either. Ironically, tonight's meeting came about because two council members, Moore, Diamond, and Aramo, discussed revisiting Rob Agostecy as being acting city manager. Another meeting that I wasn't present at, but my understanding is, that's how things get done, is discussed and then it's brought back to the other council members. So I don't see a problem with that. I don't know if that's one of these meetings that could be called a secret meeting or a per meeting. I don't take it that way. But I can assure you, I've been a participant in any meeting on the fourth floor, whether they were meeting on the fourth floor, or anything where they might have been escorted, they breakfasted, they were locked out of the fifth floor conference room. If that did happen, I definitely wasn't at that meeting as well. So I think one of the problems here, the wheels are coming off of us. Again, my understanding, what I presented with tonight before, was to appoint another acting city manager. That's it. No more, no less.
That's not a question. We know what we're here for.
That's what's on the resume.
You can't even have a meeting with your fellow council members to discuss anything. So unfortunately, we have to use this space so that we can move forward. Can't move forward, can't meet.
We've come far afield in the discussion of whether or not Rob Agostecy would be adequate to fill the role of acting city manager.
That's not what I'm asking.
That's the focus of tonight's meeting. That's what you'd like to hear, Mr. Aramo, Mr. Diamond. That's why we're here.
So how is it going to change? How is this going to change? That was the whole reason why I asked the question. How is it going to change?
So I have two comments, and then I'll ask Commissioner Taggins to speak. In terms of playing games with the Newsday and everything, we all worked on that press release together. We all sent the press release out with our quotes in it, and Newsday chose to quote you. That's not playing games, which is how it works now. I don't know why. I actually reached out to Newsday and asked them to include my quote in the printed edition because it wasn't on the online one. I asked, and it didn't happen. And that's what happens with newspapers, I don't know why. In terms of playing games, in terms of secret meetings, it's true, I come to city hall often and meet with folks that work here and talk to them and find out...
You have the right to do that.
We all have the right, we all have the right to do that. And it's true, sometimes I come here and go to the fourth floor and have a cup of coffee and talk to our corporation councils. So we all have the ability to have those meetings.
One or two people walk in, you're speaking on the...
I was still speaking.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We all have that ability, and we've discussed the need to have more meetings, and we've talked to, I think you and Rob spoke, that moving forward, we're going to meet on a more regular basis because we need to, and we understand that. And that's what I think we do moving forward, to move the city forward. We appoint Rob as acting city manager, and we have our meetings in that. Like we used to, that's all. And as far as leaving people out of meetings, it's hard to have a meeting of an open and honest discussion when private conversations are then, what's it called, spoken about from the dais at Good and Welfare. So we should be able to have conversations and change our mind on things that are private conversations, and when those private conversations become public, even though that may be a position you don't necessarily hold or take or are debating, it's very hard to have those conversations. Commissioner Taggins, you want to speak to the overtime issue?
Yes. After the first of the year, I did an evaluation of prior years overtime versus the current year, so from July 1st to December 31st. We have reduced overtime by over $300,000 in that period compared to 2018 in the same time. Additionally, the council, when it's a Robb sheet, you're allowed to cut overtime lines. So we're at a higher percentage because not only did I keep the cost down, but the budget for reduced without finding appropriate residents. So we didn't enact the special events legislation, which would have cost $200,000, $200,000 with Irish Day and all the other big events. We are a 24-hour operation. We spent a fortune overtime on Riverside Boulevard bypassing a sewer that we are awaiting an emergency bid to fix. That thing has to remain 24/7. So that adds up very, very quickly. And the other departments, private department has their own overtime budget that they eye quite very closely. Lieutenant Alvez has done a great job of staying within it. TPW is staying within, this is far aside because we lost some of the employees that were here, and we lost some employees in September, October, and the top four people on the list. We lost people in April, July, August, October, November, and just today. And the top people at the list were all civilians, which means I couldn't go lower than that to replace police officers that were already on the street. Until there was an academy, which didn't start till December 3rd. As soon as that opened up, I immediately hired four to put on the academy, which made the nine individual police officers eligible, one of whom is here tonight. And we have really started to curtail the overtime, but these are things that happen in a fluid organization. So the finances aren't, they're not good, it's still not good, but we're a long way from where we were at this time of year.
That's it for the dais, or start taking a couple of comments. All right, I'll start on the side, I'll start with Commissioner Miranda. You say your name and address, Miranda.
John Miranda, Route 404 on the fourth floor. So are you sure you want to do this? First, I just thought and say what a pleasure it has been to work with Commissioner Taggins over the last year, although he runs kind of a semi-military organization, which sometimes can be a little rattling, you know, I need this, I need that, you know? It was a pleasure to work with you. Happy that you get to go back to your love of being police commissioner, and I look forward to continue to work with you on those projects that we do with TPW. I just want to, from my perspective, as Commissioner of the Department of Public Works, many of the engineering projects that we deal with, we deal with many regulatory agencies, the Nassau County Health Department, the New York State Health Department, New York State DEC, the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, Department of Facilities Corps. And over the last two years that I've been here, I've had the pleasure of working with Rob. And Rob, to me, has been nothing but a professional. He always has the best interest of the city at heart. And a lot of times, I hear people come up here and really go after Rob, and you have to sit back and wonder if some of these things are just personal issues, you know, personal dislikes between that individual, particular individuals and Rob. And I think that any of you that got to work with him day in, day out, and they know, Councilman Bendo, I've worked with all five of the council members very closely, whenever they have questions, I'm always available to talk to them, whenever they send me, you know, a requirement that a resident needs, I follow up on it. And I just like to say to Mr. Bendo, I think that as time goes on, you'll find that if Rob is appointed, that he will fulfill your needs, and you will be, I think, satisfied that he's doing the right things. I look forward to continuing to work with you, Rob, it's been a great two years. You know, you have my support, whatever you do for the Department of Public Works, we're certainly going to be there to do what's best, not just for you, but what's best for the residents of this city. I think in my conversations with every one of the council members, I think you all have the best interest of the city at heart. We may have disagreements politically, not with me... We may have disagreements politically, not with me, but we may have disagreements politically with some people. But I think overall, I can really say without a doubt, and I put my reputation on the line, I think you all have the best interest of the city at heart. And I really appreciate working with all of you. And again, Rob, I hope that they do appoint you acting city manager and we'll accomplish and we'll get this city back on track. Thank you.
In the last year, I've worked very, very closely with Rob. We've dealt many very sensitive issues, investigations, contracts, and he's always been the constant professional. He really watched out for the city when I would ask questions. He always put the city first, even in his potential to advance his career. He led him, came back to work for the city, and this would be an egregious mistake not to appoint him.
Thank you. Any other comment on this side? Sure, come on up. Name and address for the record.
Roman Wilson, 1079, Alhambro Road, Baltimore. First and foremost, I'd just like to say, as the echo summits in the honor of Mr. Moore said, I think we need to cut off the labor now, let's get the business, let's get this city back, you know what I'm saying? Part of the thing that has no place here. Mr. Taggins, I just want to echo some words that our TPW commissioner, Mr. Randall Echo, I mean, working with you was a pleasure. At first, my background, people know me, they're going to be a police commissioner, I'm like, whoa. Police commissioner. But still, working with you, I mean, it was a pleasure, part of the labor and administration. And like, you opened the door for us to come, on a weekly basis, to come to iron out discrepancies. But normally, we don't have to come here and much, we sat there and it was good old-fashioned politics, good old-fashioned government that got a lot of things achieved. And on the way out, I was starting to say thank you for that. And I just hope you give the vote, Rob, I'm not important, we give the vote, we look forward to working with you, working with you, and working on issues to the Department of C I C and you've been prepared with us. And like I said, we need to get this city back together. All that bickering and beef and all that digging for it, it's not going to be good. So, and closing, I'd just like to say to C I C, I'd like to say thank you to the Alhambro Commissioner and...
No, 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 going back.
Going back, all right. Going back, yeah, going back and to the, hopefully, new and the hard city manager. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Anybody on the side? Anybody else on this side? Yes. Mr. Roger Kleiman? You state your name and address and your title for the record.
Roger Kleiman, 206 William Street, Fort Jefferson, New York. I'm not a resident of Long Beach, but I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak, President Ramo and the rest of the council. I'm the executive director of the Long Island Federation Labor. And I'm here because you have an opportunity to make a very good choice to hire an excellent man in Rob Agostese. The qualifications that I read are extensive and impressive. And I think what's most important is that he has shown he's able to do it through thick and thin. And when I say thick, that's kind of the tough times, the natural disasters that you had to survive here in Long Beach. The thin is kind of every day, which is maybe harder than the hard times. Because you have to establish relationships in government that last and that generate mutual respect. And I think what we've learned from our unions here in Long Beach is that your approach to government is very constructive in dealing with them, where people can come to work and do the best they can. And it's not to say that we always be that way, we know all we go, our generally disagreement and come up, but we know that you have a level of respect for people. This is important, not just for the people who work here, union members, but those who are union members living, because it's a union city, always has been. Those who live here, about 70,000 with their families who live here in Long Beach, who want the city to succeed, to be a good place to live and a good place to work. So thank you, council, for instead of hiring the guys for all of this.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side can speak? Sure, come on up. Name and address for the record.
My name is Matthew Arisich, I'm from New York.
Why can't they play like 80% of the speakers?
All right, everyone has an opportunity to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I grew up on Long Island. I understand Long Islanders. It is something that plagues me that we have some distrust in all of us. However, I think we can change that. Thank you, city council members, President Ramo, and you, Matthew Arisich, president of the Building Construction Trades Council of Nassau and Southern Counties. My pleasure is due to you on behalf of more than 60,000 members of the council, many of them who live here in Long Beach. And express our strong support for the appointment of Mr. Robert Agostese to the position of the acting city manager of the city of Long Beach. I have been a labor representative for decades with considerable experience in dealing with various labor organizations, towns and boards. I've seen the evidence firsthand of Mr. Agostese's efforts in providing sound advice to the city during his term, serving as lead council to all the city boards and commissions, as well as during his role during Superstorm Sandy. As evident in his resume, Mr. Agostese has excelled throughout his career with many notable accomplishments, which I will repeat here. I will focus on his experience primarily those that are related to his political abilities to demonstrate the qualities necessary for managing your city. Excellent knowledge, skill set, patience and leadership. In the immediate aftermath of the storm, he was responsible for all the contract operations and review and compliance, including preventing wage loss, providing counseling and strategic planning with respect to the city's damage reimbursement claims of FEMA, assembly of technical and legal consulting teams, and also direct negotiation with the carrier and claim submissions. As you stated before, his efforts resulted in the payment of $10 million payment, which was full policy supplement for the flood-related damages, something that's a tremendous accomplishment. These tasks were exhibited by an individual who teaches others by example, being inclusive, communicative, and constantly exhibits curiosity and motivation to learn. In addition, he handles all phases and aspects of the labor relations in the public sector unions, including contract negotiation and contract preparations, attended to the union regulations. He comes prepared for all types of learning situations, having researched the relevant topics so that he can provide quality care as a participant and then participate actively in session with council, assisting in the supervision. Mr. Agostese is articulate, well-read, and able to utilize his knowledge effectively in a climate setting. But in addition to prioritizing his own processes, Mr. Agostese considers the needs of others. On multiple occasions, he addresses data on relevant topics tailored for the rest of the council to better understand the situation. One such topic was the introduction of apprentice language, explaining its importance and the impact it has to safety on projects. In conclusion, it is a rare find to find someone so well-rounded and suited to handle just about anything you throw their way. I believe the caliber of person you have here will certainly represent your city well. Therefore, I'm happy to give Mr. Agostese our highest recommendation as a candidate to represent the city of Long Beach as acting city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give Mr. Agostese a record as well, please. And one last thing is, Commissioner, I know you're on your... On your task of taking two positions, I did so in my prior role. It's no easy feat and thank you.
And thank you for representing the 60,000 families, any of whom live here in the city of Long Beach. Appreciate it. Any more comments on this side? Mr. Gussler, come on up. Sorry, I saw Mr. Gussler stand there. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, I can be a bit... Let me just put a benefit to you, Tom, more than one of you guys, all in praise and all stuff that you guys yourself and the councilmen and diamond, or the support of this appointment. Basically, I'll summarize what these people behind you. What it means is, Agostese has too much dirt on us for us to say no and be anonymous. You could really just call it down, Jack, you gave a lot of... Second thing I'm gonna relate to you is story. My sister was across the street, ocean ride, doing exercise, person's out on the bike next to her. One girl named Lauren Darien, she worked ever so briefly in Corporation Council's office. So while you guys are lording him, all this hard work and this, let me tell you what really goes on in that office. This woman quit that office after several months. And the reason, she told my sister, she quit that office, is because she didn't go into a career in law, so she can sit around all day and scheme about how to destroy people's lives. After what goes on, Corporation Council's office, overwhelming majority of the time, she couldn't take it, it was toxic, she had to get out, she left. So that's the environment of Mr. Agostese and the culture that Mr. Agostese promotes. To touch on the comments from Mr. Miranda about his feeling that most of the attacks on Mr. Agostese motivated by personal dislike? Sure. I can tell you this, that if I'm driving down the street and I see Mr. Agostese crossing the street, it's gonna take every bit of willpower I have and I'm just giving ideas. Like this. I'm giving ideas. This is the level of behavior that this guy has been changing with people. Did I wake up one day and decide that I want to save Mr. Agostese? No. But he is working with him and working against him, that I was forced to feel this way about him. This is another point that you guys brought up about Rob leaving here and you had to lord him back. Rob was leaving here to go to work for Laura Gillan, who's the county manager supervisor. Only problem is the county has been county council, cut off all of the funding for staff, so she couldn't hire who she wanted. He wasn't going anywhere. There was no reason to lord him back. He was basically a man without a country. You guys had, he was capital, he didn't have to give a raise. Speaking of raises, on January 3rd, 2018, his salary was bumped up to 177,688. This was big this week. Not authorized by any resolution of the Department of Public Works. I don't know how it happened. Sometime later, during the budget, that same salary came to be discussed in the proposed budget as the salary, the new salary for Mr. Agostese. But as it turned out, he was getting a little time back to January 3rd, 2018. I have a copy of the city manager personnel action.
The time is up to try and make a sentence.
There was always thought about he was getting that raise. He was getting that raise. And I've seen every city manager's personnel action since that January 1st, January 3rd, 2018 action where he was granted that 177,688 salary. And I have not seen a corresponding city manager's personnel action that indicated the salary has been rolled back. So I'm asking you, Mr. Agostese, what's your salary?
Thank you, Mr. Gussler.
What's your salary?
Thank you, Mr. Gussler. To the budgets, thank you. I mean, a lot of people don't want to speak this evening.
President Ramo, if I could just respond to something? I have to say that I think it's inappropriate to attack the Corporation Council's office. A number of the attorneys are here today. They represent the city regularly. I've worked for the New York State Court system. They appear regularly, their reputation and disaffirmity, and they repeatedly defend the city on a number of different cases and answer questions that are posed to them. So to use this as an opportunity to attack the entire office seems a little bit inappropriate, particularly given the understanding right here. So I think that all of us who have dealt with them realize that they're very talented attorneys and represent the city well in each level of court or administrative agency that they appear before.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. I know we've been there all underpaid as well. Miss Tina Fiori? Name and address for the record, please.
Tina Fiori, Long Beach, New York. First of all, thank you for your service. I'm sure you're happy to give her the one and probably understand that. I think what the problem with tonight is that there's this extreme lack of communication. This is an ongoing issue. We should not be here tonight, a room with C I C employees, okay, you guys did a great job, thank you, should not have to be stacked or flooded with people. This should be about the residents. We don't need out-of-town...
We don't need...
We need people. But there are other people here speaking that are not regular, that don't pay the taxes here, we all do. What's sad, I think, is the fact that we've come to this point. Not personal, Mr. Agostese, this is, it's the process that went on. We're over a year where we said we were gonna surge and we haven't. And this, I think, your point earlier, where the question should be, if Rob Agostese is gonna be appointed as an acting city manager, does the surge end? Are we going to still sign that contract to look for a permanent city manager? Or does that end tonight and we hope after December, January of 2020, that we're just gonna appoint? That's the question I think you were trying to answer, I don't think that point came across. I think it's pretty disappointing as a resident to watch all of you people up here who are our elected leaders, who do not ever get along. This is not about party, this is not about politics, this is about running our city. Everybody's got an agenda and it needs to stop. Because November election is coming. And most of you may still be here and most of you may not be here. But we're a disaster. This city looks like crap, it's a disaster, our taxes keep going up, we have zero leadership, we have zero vision, and we need somebody to take control. If that's gonna be you, Mr. Agostese, I hope so. I hope you know what you're getting yourself into. But if you can't respond to residents and your co-council, the council members up here in a manner which is respectful to the residents, then maybe this job isn't for you. I don't know. It's the only job you have to do, but you also have to learn. You gotta let the residents vent and you gotta give them answers. But this response, one word, and the way you guys react to the residents, is really unacceptable. We put you there and as much as fast as we put you there, we can take you out of there.
Well, I think we can, I think we're in a city of disaster. And in terms of, does the search end? We did discuss, I believe, Councilwoman Moore and Councilwoman Diamond were there and on the call. We did discuss that we would evaluate Rob's performance after Labor Day and maybe decide what we would do at that point. So I would say the search is over and we'll decide whether we visit that matter after Labor Day.
Search is over?
Is that what we...
You will say, but that's the council. Again, that's what I asked earlier, and now you're saying the search is over. But we, as a team, we haven't voted or had any conversation to agree that the search is over.
Why would we cut, we would be cutting his legs off, anyone that came in. We're asking you to do a job, oh, by the way, we're searching for your replacement. Have a good job.
Acting, acting!
I disagree with that. The title...
What I'm saying is, does the search, and I think that was the question, does the search end tonight? Where I started at the beginning to say, have we officially closed the search? So are we saying now that it's...
I think I was clear when I said for me, the search ends, yes.
I didn't interpret that as a council.
The search would end after we take this vote, assuming that there's an appointment. We did agree on a phone conversation that the three of us had. I was there on the phone, but everybody else, both of you were present, that we would evaluate his performance then, after the budget had been put together, after the summer season. And this way, if there was an issue, we believed that a search term is necessary. Not only do we have the search term in mind and know that we can retain them rather quickly, but at the same time, we would be able to, if it were necessary, to replace them before the next budget season and give us an appropriate amount of time, which we would not have if we were to appoint a search term right now, because the search term takes a period of time and it would put us in the middle of the budget season, which has already begun. So it would be unfair to place a new person who has no experience with the city into that sort of situation. That was my understanding on the telephone conversation, that we understood, we spoke with, as there was just mentioned, a few of us were on a phone conference with a union reference representative from this particular vendor. And should it be necessary, they can be retained very quickly. We could decide that after the budget's in place, the summer season is over, and then we can do that in September when we're in a better position to handle the challenge we are.
If the search is over after this vote tonight, then we're not appointing an acting. What you're effectively doing is appointing a permanent city manager. The intention of acting is interim until you find a permanent. What you're telling us is you're not intending to look for permanent, or at least to the end of the year. So what we're doing in effect is, we're given the title of acting, but this is really a vote to appoint a permanent city manager.
No, and in particular, if you look at Rob's comments in the newspaper, he specifically said that at the end of the year, he would consider and revisit moving to Long Beach and a number of other different issues. We can all decide that after a period of time. We are faced with the beginning of the budget season. Right now, to put in, to engage in a search firm is unfair to not only the candidates, but to the city as well. We can agree or disagree whether it's acting, not acting. We're appointing an acting city manager for a period of time, at which time, we can decide whether we want to continue in this direction, whether we want to engage with the search firm and replace them. But to appoint, to appoint a search firm right now is not only unfair to the candidates that we would have, it's costly to the city when you have a person in place. And in particular, it is unfair to the selected acting city manager who wants to run the city and cannot do so effectively if there's this search that is taking place right at that end of time. And it would put us in the middle of the budget, in the middle of the capital plan. The timing just doesn't count.
So if this is intended to be on an acting interim, however you want to characterize it basis, then why is there not a deadline as part of the resolution to when the acting term would end? And then a decision is made whether it's Mr. Agasteci gets the permanent assignment or there's other candidates considered. Why then is there not a deadline as part of the resolution?
In my opinion, and I'm not gonna speak for all the members of the council, I think that leads to ineffective leadership. I don't think that it's fair to do that to the selected person. So there's just an end in sight. We need an individual who's going to be able to lead the city through the next budget season, through the next summer. There's all sorts of challenges that the city faces, both structurally, internally, externally. We need to have a person who is not going to just have a quick stop short. We agreed or discussed that we would be able to evaluate his performance after the summer. To do it before that is premature and inappropriate and unfair to him because it doesn't give them enough time to implement some of the things and the changes. And to be quite candid, the priorities that the council actually set towards this was good. He also said in his new article that he would like to roll out a plan with a number of different things in it. He needs an opportunity to be able to develop that. I haven't told him all the things that I would like to be in plan. I don't believe he has. I don't believe that everybody has. We discussed random things. But I think that it's inappropriate to just give him a quick two or three or four month period. I thought it would be appropriate to do it to Commissioner Taggney. And I think it's inappropriate to give to Rob Agasteci as well.
We could just please quiet down. Thank you. Give everyone an opportunity to speak.
So then, this is especially with an acting assignment. Until three council members decide, it's not an acting assignment. The document.
Councilwoman Mendel?
I just wanted to point out, once again, I wasn't partying to meeting. I guess we were going out with Councilwoman Diamond, Councilwoman Lemon, Councilwoman Moore. My understanding was, again, acting is acting. This is an acting appointment. And after Labor Day, there would be a reassessment. The reason why Labor Day, the budget, and our summer season, which again was related to Long Beach, that is the trigger point in the minds of the people. Also, the reason why there wasn't a termination date or an end date was because the lessons from the force Commissioner Taggney to take on the role. Originally, that was only going to be for an empty month, then it turned into six months, then it turned into a year. So it never could have an end date. And it's not any secret that this council has a little bit of a problem agreeing on what time of day it is sometimes. So we need somebody in place that we don't have to worry. Their time is going to expire by an operation of law that we can't resolve. That was my understanding. Why this was drafted this way? And why the Labor Day was chosen and the trigger date is reassessment? Acting is acting. Again, I would like to believe tonight was to appoint a continuing acting city manager.
Stop saying acting.
I believe that the acting city manager is continuing from Commissioner Taggney to another officer of the city who has, again, institutional knowledge. I think we've come far afield for what really seems to be political fear and rhetoric. And we're wasting a lot of people's time when the city has much more important things to focus on. And we need political leadership continuing in place and to move forward. If each and every one of you, if you did not have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Agasteci, to speak with other councilmen, if everyone up at this stage knew about this, I was one of the last ones to know. I was the one who had it. I didn't know what Mr. Agasteci, I wasn't present at that. I told you to discuss this with the men.
Yes, three, whatever it is, three weeks ago, I told Mr. Agasteci I could sit and discuss. And then there was never a conversation, a penny come after that.
I must admit, did you reach out to me? Did you reach out to any of the councilmembers and say, hey, I had a deal with Mr. Agasteci? Are you guys thinking about this? I have questions about that. I haven't heard from anyone other than Councilwoman Moore contacting me and said, hey, we're interested in this looking back. Did you have Mr. Agasteci as acting city manager? What do you think? But from Councilwoman Moore sharing with me, I wanted to know.
Go back to what Councilwoman Mandela was saying. That was my point at the beginning. I think that whatever the term is, there has to be need to specify the terms. And if that's the issue on the table, then we should, as a council, be able to resolve that issue. Something has to be indicated in terms of amendment to this resolution. Because we're going to find ourselves in the same situation that we're saying is only going to be until Labor Day and it's going to become something else. And it's not fair to Mr. Agasteci. It's not fair. Because we're not gonna have the continuity and the stability that we need. That's the purpose of putting time limits in place. And I think we can do that and we can work on that together.
Okay, I just had a couple of comments from the last speaker. We discussed the evaluation at the Labor Day, so that was discussed. And one of the things that the last speaker said was that this council doesn't agree on anything. We're allowed to disagree. That's politics. That's government. That's how it works. And, you know, when the time comes, if three vote for the item or four for a bonding, then the item passes and we're allowed to disagree. That's just how it works. And then, as far as attacking folks that are from out of town that came here to speak, these gentlemen represent over 7,000 families that live in the city of Long Beach. They speak for the labor movement in the city of Long Beach. So we couldn't fit all those folks in this room. And I have to take, I have to say, you know, saying the city looks like crap. I think, I disagree. And I think every CSCA member that's here today would also start with you. Could you name a police station, name and address for the record?
Mary Lawrence, Long Beach. I'm here like 15 years. I have been here through coalitions, Republicans, Democrats, and yours, all Democrats up here. The animosity that comes out of these meetings is sickness, sickness. And I don't know, Mr. Aramo, if you know how you, some of you, you and Mr. Agasteci, have come across the people. It's very hurtful. And yes, these people voted you in. And to be disrespectful, I have never shown any of you disrespect, but I have seen the disrespect. And I think it's absolutely intolerable. And Mr. Taggney, you were on the school board. You know what acting means. When we're looking for superintendents, and I've been on many committees, principals the same. When you put someone in like Dr. Friedman, you were all still searching for somebody. That is not an excuse to cut off a search. And this is nothing against you, Mr. Agasteci. You're going in as acting. And while you're acting, they are supposed to be finding somebody absolutely fit for Long Beach City.
Anyone else on this side here can speak? I see a hand, but I can't see your face. Mr. McNally, please come up. Name and address for the record.
John McNally, 613 Walnut Street. Here's my problem and it's not Mr. Agasteci. The legislative declaration of the open meetings law states in part, "It is essential to the maintenance of democratic society that the public business be performed in an open and public manner and that the citizens of the state be fully aware of and able to observe the performance of public officials and attend and listen to the deliberations and decisions that go into the making of public policy." From opinions issued by the New York State Center on Open Government. Based on the foregoing, the open meetings law is intended to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the performance of public officials in their deliberations. That intent cannot be realized if members of the public body conduct public business as a body or vote by phone, email, or otherwise not public matters. Granted, there is nothing in the open meetings laws that would preclude members of a public body from confering individually by telephone or via email. However, a series of communications between individual members, or telephone calls or communications among members, which results in a collective decision or a consensus that will drive such a decision would be inconsistent with the law. Again, according, so it's clear from the press release, it's clear from, I don't know how many statements you folks made, that you, in your discussions tonight, made yourselves all guilty of violating open meetings laws. We conducted public business and admitted to it repeatedly tonight, that you have formed a collective consensus enough to affect a vote tonight by doing the public business behind the scene in individual series of conversations. It is a clear violation of open meetings law. Again, according to the standard of open government, such consensus can only be arrived at through a public meeting. I totally understand that particulars of this matter, in terms of personnel policy, may warrant an executive session. But I am also confident no such executive session is in place since all such meetings need to take place during the course of a public meeting. In short, though I fully understand that only lightning means a short delay in the passage of Mr. Agasteci's appointment, I strongly recommend that council withdraw this measure tonight. Hold a public working session meeting on the matter where your deliberations can be observed by the public in an open and transparent manner and follow it with a legal vote at the next meeting. Otherwise, you are open to appointing a Corporation Council and acting city manager in clear violation.
I would just agree with your interpretation. Anyone else on this side?
I'll make a motion to withdraw the resolution so we can have a working session to discuss this and see if there's consensus.
Any seconds? Any seconds?
Motion to withdraw this item.
Second?
Do I have a second in there?
Yeah.
You have to poll. Withdraw the item? Do we have a second?
If you prefer table, I'll go table.
I'd like to just motion to go into executive session so that we can come back to the.
Your Corporation Council needs to do that in the public. That's not grounds for an executive session.
All right.
The other.
We have to do this as a legal matter.
Here, if you hold the motion to table. And then separately, we can have a working session, necessarily go into executive, to discuss. So motion to withdraw the table, sorry. Motion to table the resolution pending the working session of the city council discussing.
Go into executive session.
Executive session. Motion to table, last second.
Second. Yeah.
No.
No. Next speaker from this side? Anybody else? No comments on this side? Oh, there we go, we have more. Police station, name and address for the record.
Thomas Arnold, 103, 102, Long Beach, New York. I have three quick things to say. One, it's despicable that competing the CSDA and their own neighbors, family and friends that are against this. We have nothing against them. Somebody clearly called them out calling to come here and support something that they either are in favor of or they were just brought here because they were told to come here. I have nothing against them. My family has a long history of meetings. My dad was a order maker, local five, was president of the unit for 10 years. I've got nothing against any of these people out there, but it's kind of despicable that we're kind of pinned against them at this point in time. Second, so we're not talking about looking, searching any further if we do appoint Agasteci tonight. But I've got nothing against at this point. However, what if, God forbid, he decides to leave a month from now or has something where he has to withdraw and get no acting city manager? Are we gonna start the process again? Why don't we continue to look while we are appointing him? There's nothing, I don't get where the process is here. So we hired him. We stopped the process looking. He leaves a month. Where does that leave us? Exactly where we are now, with no city manager. You guys need to do your jobs. This is ridiculous. We have people coming here, reading and reading, you never give us answers. Never, ever. It's, we appointed you. You work for us. And I'm looking at you because you never answer the question. Third of all, you know, I don't want to go to third of all, because I think that's the perfect way to end this. Please answer the question. Don't just look us in the eye and say, we'll discuss it. What happens if he leaves? Do you have any answer for us?
Or he will be as active city manager of right, when Rob is, assuming he gets appointed, when any city manager or any acting city manager, as of right now, if Mr. Taggney is unavailable, Rob Agasteci is acting city manager of right, in the same situation.
Correct. So it's the, we don't want to put Taggney back in acting city manager. He's a lot on his plate.
It would have to be an executive member of the administration.
Okay. And actually, I do have a third thing to say. You listed off of all of Agasteci's accomplishments, everything he's done for this city, which I'm not disagreeing with. However, he's been here for 12 years through four city managers. Did you bring up any point in the fact that after the last 12 years, this city's complete disarray? The city looks like shit. Everyone back there is white. There are potholes everywhere. There's nothing against them. There's nothing against them because they don't have the budget to do their jobs. The potholes from last year are still here. So thankfully, I know where they still are where I'm driving around this winter. But the fact is, it's nothing against the CSDA. They're working within their means. I've got nothing against anybody out there. But if you drive around this town, you'll see that everything is a mess. It's a mess. I've lived here my entire life. I love living here. I love, everybody lives in this town. I love the CSDA members. They do a great job. But there's no denying, walk down the street, drive down the street, you can see. There are a lot of problems in this city and nobody's been warning about it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And I will admit that, you know, that did happen in the winter times. Water expanding contracts has a lot of problems. And we do have a team that's working very hard. Hey, please, I disagree with your characterization. Police station, name and address for the record.
Bill Fancy, West End, Long Beach. Commissioner, congratulations on your impending escape. I hope you got the champagne eyes. I'm old and I'm not too bright, so if somebody's looking at. I understand that there's a deputy or assistant city manager. I'm just wondering why we have put Mr. Taggney through this for a year and not the assistant city manager, who was sitting there and leading the city. and not the assistant city manager was the city mayor and lead the city? For an old man that doesn't know very much.
The active city manager has to be an executive administrative officer.
So, an assistant city manager is not an administrative office?
And that's only a small, that's, very often the deputy city manager also holds another job within the city.
Oh, we know that, but it is a title.
Right.
For a job description, it's a heartbeat away from the city manager.
Right.
Which means that he has to be trained to step in. Why the hell didn't he?
Let's use a hat.
I think that the answer is...
No, Mr. Robinson, it's a lot of things to be, while waiting ahead of issues, personalized, one of your questions is... So, he had been, I think, a very active role in these things. What has an active, fortunately, or unfortunately, there's a surprise. And I can't speak for why.
Well, I think that the issue is...
Actually, I understand that you can't speak for why. But I understand the purpose. My whole question is, if you've got somebody that's trained and sitting right there, right outside your office, why wouldn't he be able to move? It makes no sense to me. And like I said, I'm not brilliant, play all of you people. Now, I'm older than all of you people, so it's tough for me to understand. So, please, simple English lawyer people.
I think we, I think we answered your question, and also those who speak are wanting Rob Agastya, so...
Well, kind of, yeah. You want to say something?
The city council last December made a decision unanimously at this time, recognized that Mr. Vendo wasn't on the council at the time, that we were going to appoint Commissioner Tagney, who had offered to assume the responsibility. So now, that is, we collectively, at the time, together publicly voted to appoint him as opposed to the assistant city manager. There was a number of reasons that each of us was assuming had...
Well, but you don't know.
Were making that decision, I'm sorry.
But you don't know the reason. You're only assuming there were reasons. Is there something wrong with... Is he competent or something? He has a looking competent.
He is incompetent, he is.
You're right.
I don't know, close to answering your question, but my recollection is when the past full-time city manager, Mr. Schimmel, was here, he designated who he sort of says is replaced, which should be unable to either sit or wait or whatnot. That designation was police commissioner, and I believe the fallback was court counsel. And Mr. Schimmel left us. That's when Mr. Tagney assumed the role of active city manager. By operation of this council, it continued against his will, that role of active city manager. But my understanding was, the city manager at the time designated by a letter who's going to be acting in this absence. And it was always the two highlights on the council, the police commissioner and the court counsel, which was court counsel before Mr. Agastya. But that's why, I guess, the lineage went from active city manager to police commissioner.
But why don't we have, we have an assistant or a deputy?
Your time is up.
Well, actually, I owe it to you with our, so I think it's your number five.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Your time is up. Yep, yep, your time is up.
Commissioner, congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Okay, see no hands will come to this side. Yes, Mr. Verona, please come up.
Mr. Verona? This city is in a financial crisis. Debt and other liabilities are out of control, and we can't pay our bills. In the last fiscal year, we drained almost all of our fund balance, which is our reserves. The city is not just in a weak financial state, as the controller's office said, or even a horrendous financial state, as I pointed out. We are broke. Yet, when I asked the city council what their plan to solve the crisis was, the council gave me a non-answer with Mr. Romo saying, quote, "None of us have financial experience." If the council nominates Mr. Agastya as city manager, a man with no financial experience, we will be further kicking the can down the road and nominating someone who does not have the skills or experience to lead us out of this financial crisis. Our city cannot afford to not address these financial problems. I asked the council to strike this nomination and nominate someone who is independent, competent, and financially experienced. Thank you.
Name and address for the record?
That's Warrior Bond Street. Michael, thank you. You know, Johnny, Joe, Rob, I wish you all the best. We have ghosts. Uh, my concerns here tonight are with the council and the process. Not with your capability, but by your service.
Thank you, you speak up.
I said, my concerns are with the process. I think you owe the public a little bit more clarity, a little bit more, to say honesty, but straightforwardness in your answering the questions. There is no reason to push this. Now, I don't think that we'd hurt to go two weeks and have a hearing, as Mr. Vendo has suggested. I have to ask questions. How many people, and I don't expect this tonight, but I would expect that I hope to have an answer. How many people applied for this job? How many interviews did we hold? I'm sorry, but for something as important as this, I don't think a Skype interview served the purpose of seeing somebody from the neck up. You know, it's an important job. And I wonder why, after a year, we haven't been able to find someone. We live in one of the most desirable places on Long Island. Don't tell me that people aren't interested in coming here. I don't get it. So, I would like to know some of those answers to the questions. What was the cost of the search firm? Why we would not keep it open? The charter says temporarily. Temporarily, as active city manager did, got to be a length of time. You could temporarily cover gray hair, and you could do it for 30 years. So, there needs to be some clarification on this thing. Mrs. Moore, I will stand with you any day, anywhere in support. Uh, Mr. Mandel, again, I can go on, but, Mr. Mandel, twice tonight you said, "Summer is the lifeblood of Long Beach." A lifeblood of Long Beach is in this room, in their homes, watching the city. As earlier before, Boardwalk is the lifeblood. Don't ever make that mistake. A lifeblood is right here.
Next one here. Mr. Pinto? Name and address for the record?
Good evening, Sam Pinto. Um, I wasn't going to be cutting out speaking tonight, but a few things were brought up that still deserve the right to be represented in the crowd as well. Uh, first speaking as a resident, have been following this pretty closely as a resident. I will say this entire process has been politely described as a train wreck. It's been a mess. I'm sorry, no offense to anyone up there, and this has nothing to do with Rob, but the back and forth, the inconsistencies, the uncertainties, it's been a mess. And hopefully, this brings a closer step to a resolution. But there is definitely a lot more that needs to be done in this process. And moving forward, I think, I mean, just for an example, the school that you support, uh, last year, they had an acting superintendent serve while they had an executive search firm. So, I don't think that's a bad idea. It's obviously your choice to maintain that. But this entire process really definitely needs some fixing. It's been a mess. Secondly, speaking, I mean, so a few years ago, we had the city council up here. Um, I think Mr. Mandel was on the council, Mr. Romo, and we had you guys get up here and speak the world of this guy. This guy was going to save Long Beach. This guy is the best. This guy is, this guy bad. He's going to be the best city manager we ever had. And look where we are now. We're worse than we were before. So, with no disrespect to Rob, we can't have all this, you know, speaking reputation of all this stuff. Look where it brought us. Right, we're in a bigger mess than we were pre the fiscal crisis. We have issues, it's been taken out, you know, out of crazy sorts. So, you know, it's just, maybe I'm just having, you know, reminiscence of what we wanted to do a few years ago. But don't come up here and start saying, hey, we're having a city manager, he's going to save the world, he's going to do this, he's ready to address me. We've got to see the action of the guy because we got burned real bad by this last guy. Real bad. So, um, just to that, a little deja vu, I couldn't help but bring that up. Um, Mr. Agastya, I will give you credit. I have been able to work here as a labor, uh, labor union president, I think, putting that hat on right now. Yeah, Rob has been able to get things done, I'll give him credit. Um, but you brought up earlier, Mr. Romo, this restructuring of the fire department. That was one of the, in my experience, worst faith opportunities of a, of a union-friendly community with their workforce. You laid people off, you hired a company for almost $60,000, that RFP process. You forced down people, so those guys lost their jobs, guys were fighting. The community was up in arms. And that's not something you should be proud of. And you spoke of it earlier, if you're proud of it, it wasn't that way. And the city has spent millions and millions of dollars, uh, you know what, over millions of dollars, paying for outside council. And in the end, the best thing that came out of it was the settlement worked out by Rob. So, hopefully, that can bring a little light to the situation. But I wouldn't say that this restructuring's been a goal of success, and it wasn't because of Rob, because, uh, it wasn't, this wasn't Rob's undertaking. Rob did a good job. Um, I look forward to working with Rob if this does come through. But it, no offense, man, you can't come up here and say that was a success story clear up because it was bad. And, um, Rob, we love you, Mr. Tagney, thank you for your service. Thank you.
James, do you just clarify? I, I tend to pick, I'm the last guy?
No, 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 not you. No, come back, Jack. The guy who was, you know, financial, sorry, Mike, not you.
So, so just a couple of points. One, I, I disagree, um, now, same, your time is up, so you can say something. Um, I disagree that the restructuring was a mess. The data doesn't show that, at least what I'm shown. And, uh, grant funding ran out, and guys were let go with an opportunity to come back as a paramedic. They weren't laid off, but yes, they did in fact lose their jobs. But, um, there was an opportunity for them to come back, which they refused. Um, as far as deja vu, that I was here when this guy was going to, um, uh, save the world, I was not here, I was brought up while he was in fact our city manager. Um, and, and as far as us being worse, I would disagree. I would say that we've been continuing down a path, and that, uh, Superstorm Sandy was a huge influx of money that masked some of our financial issues. And now that that money is all dried up, we're back on that path and moving forward. And I think Commissioner Tagney would be the first one to tell you that we're better off today than we were a year ago, and vice versa if we go backwards through the years. So, thank you for your time, Mr. Mandel, and your service as president of the...
Thank you, thank you for that. I just want to reiterate, this was not an air reference word back at all, towards Rob.
I, I understand you're going to have to work with him, yes. Anybody else on this side? Mr. Lester?
For a last, um, this currently a public meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 5. The first and the third Tuesday of the month between the council meets. It's been away for years. Suddenly, a one-gender item, a special meeting of years with two days notice. No offense, at this time, it's a con job to me. Outside of a ski trip, there's no great urgency that it can't be done in a regularly scheduled meeting, especially since what we're really talking about is appointing a full-time, permanent city manager. This is not an antachronist status, he might make the fine manager. Hell, from what I've heard, he may define saint. My opinion, in my opinion alone, and I've been coming here for a long time and watching this, is the idea of appointing an individual as a city manager who is currently, as we understand, under investigation for questionable payouts. An individual has proven time and time again that he's antagonistic towards the citizens he's supposed to represent. An individual that has threatened with lawsuits, citizens that have questioned him at the podium. An individual that was part of the council's office that failed to time his put-in responsive papers, which resulted in a $50 million judgment against the city, still out there. An individual that was part of the council's office when an agreement was made to pledge the city's support for a pilot program that would cost the city millions of dollars in tax revenue, and now is embroiled the city in a $100 million lawsuit. And an individual that has failed to earn the trust of so many in the city seems patently absurd. But, that's where my biggest problem is. My biggest problem is how this was orchestrated by the city manager. On September 27, 2016, almost two and a half years ago, Jack Schimmel declared he was running for the county executive. We all knew Jack was leaving the city, and it was time to start looking. Yet, in that two and a half years, no new city manager could be found. There were many qualified candidates, but conveniently, nobody seemed to be good enough. Considering that in the last 500 years, the longest it has ever taken to select a pope, the leader of 2 billion casters, has been 183 days, the idea that almost five times that amount of time, we can't find a city manager is unfathomable. And the other thing that I have to note, in all this time, we've had a temporary city manager we have not had a comptroller appointed. Because, as we were told, it's not proper to have a temporary manager make such an appointment. Now, we are going to have another temporary manager, so-called. And what is the first thing he's going to do? The first thing? Appoint a comptroller. Not a bad move. So, apparently, that could have been done a long time ago, and in fact, such a lack of comptroller has been an issue raised both by skating audits and by movies. So, once again, the citizens suffer, so the majority can have their head candidate discussed. Thank you.
Anyone in the whole room here here to speak? Yes, Mr. Hyde, please come up. Name and address for the record?
James, uh, tonight, I'm by East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York, in our great city. But it's always an honor and an opportunity, uh, one of the opportunities to come before those that are elected, whether I help you get in or not. Uh, I'm honored to be here in this city. Honored to be a CSEA member of 23 years. Would like to thank God also for our president, Mr. John Mooney, and our executive staff, and our fine humor that's here, and those that are here representing 60,000 families. Uh, to me, they're representing us even out of town, so they're more welcome to speak. I am a taxpayer, and I appreciate them coming to speak on our behalf. Uh, what I want to say is, uh, I, I come as a, I speak in my individual capacity, uh, and I also come to speak as a chairperson of the Long Beach Martin Luther King Center, where we, uh, care for children, and we look after children, protect children, and, uh, also, we care for seniors too, in what we do, uh, at the Martin Luther King Center. I will say that I've had the opportunity to see Rob on, uh, on different occasions for different things that we have done with the city, where the Martin Luther King, uh, we enjoy our partnership with working with seniors and youth, that's hundreds throughout the years. Uh, again, over the 12 years that he's been here, I've been a volunteer, a board member of the Martin Luther King Center, uh, and we dealt with contracts, we dealt with programming, we dealt with, uh, just a whole lot of things. And I would say I would like to thank you, uh, all of the, you know, sometimes when you like someone, when you don't like them, you can find great things to say about them, and you can find a lot of bad things to say about them. You know, I've been fired by the city twice, but thank God I want my job back on both times. And I still have many things to say about you. And I would never wish for anyone to say that they would want to run you over. And I pray for anybody that would want to do some harm to where it would hurt their life in that matter. You know, at the end of the day, when people do wrong, God will have the last say in what God do with them. But again, I say to you, Commissioner Tagney, you know, you came here and you're sick, you know, and I appreciate you for doing both jobs and not accepting another pay for doing both jobs. You know, too many people would not do that. And a lot of people that are sick would be staying home right now, but you came to be a part of this very important meeting. So, again, as you are an active city manager, if they can, it, thank you. Uh, as you're an active city manager, whether they find another city manager, whether they don't, hopefully, like Nissa was saying, which I support 100%, I thank God for your accomplishments as the first African-American city council person. And we do need to do whatever we can to work diligently together. So, again, to each and every one of you, I'm happy to be a part of this city. And I pray that we can do whatever we can for the best of this city. God bless you, and let us continue to protect children and families.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, Mr. Moore, thank you.
Name and address for the record?
Hello, Karen, I'm on 74 Bart Street, Long Beach, New York. I just specifically want to thank Commissioner Tagg. I think he knows how I feel about him. I've always admired him as our police commissioner. I think he's done an absolutely exemplary job as acting city manager. I've been impressed every time I've heard him answer questions having to do with the business of the city. Very knowledgeable, obviously doing his homework. And I told him I thought he should quit the police department and go for the city manager job, but I understand that why he doesn't want to do that. And I understand why it's difficult for people from outside of Long Beach or from other applicants. If they were to come here and watch these proceedings every couple of weeks, I don't think they'd want the job either. So my hope is that we can all work together, but really specifically, I'm here to thank Commissioner Tagg with much appreciation and we'll see you on the streets.
Thank you, Mrs. Haidt. Anyone else care to speak on this item, Mr. Perklin? Specifically to the item of?
Dan Perklin, Long Beach, New York. I'd like to add two questions, present two questions. One is, have the job description of the city manager, again reiterated by Mr. Mandel, and could he address the improper preparation of bond consent in April 2018? And I'll save my time for his answer.
I can't read, you were advised by line counsel, there was no manner in which we were executing separation of the environment, was not, it works with best practices, and we change it to call it a brand.
Okay. And the job description again, for city manager?
What was the specific question, Mr. Perklin?
Well, what was the detail? I know there was a prerequisite. I mean, also, to just emphasize on this, something like a temporary, temporary is kind of like a permanent sub, which exists in the field of education, which means you're always a pre-sub and you become permanent. So it's almost like redundant sort of thing. So getting back to divorce.
We'll evaluate it on Labor Day and see where we go from there.
But it means that it's going to, it means that it's going to end at some point in time. So during that point in time, you could be looking for another permanent person. And you're going to lose that opportunity because when that person decides they don't want to be a permanent sub, then you have to start the search all over again and you've lost all that opportunity and it could take another year and a half.
The search firm has a very tight guideline that we've come to all learn and a very tight time schedule, I mean, so. Should we decide to go that route after Labor Day, then they will down to applicants very quickly.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
So why did it take us two years to get to this point?
I'm sorry?
Why did it take us two years to get to this point? We didn't hire him two years ago.
We didn't have, we didn't hire social, we hired ourselves, we interviewed ourselves, we did Skype interviews ourselves.
I guess they call that like a foresight.
Someone mentioned the Skype interviews. We had people applying from California, so that's why Skype interviews were done.
In Mexico, wow.
In Mexico. Unfortunately, they got the package requests for close to $300,000. So it was a learning process for the entire council.
Well, we ought to, Mr. Tagg needs to say this. So anyway, and congratulations on your turn.
Well, you're not replying to it.
One job, one job, one job. Thank you, Mr. Perklin. Mr. Breiden? Name and address for the record?
Dan Gray, Long Beach, New York. I didn't plan on saying anything today, but I just, I just have a couple of points to just make there. I think are important. As long as I can remember about the past year, Commissioner Tagg has been saying, you know, I'm going to go on to do this anymore, I need to buy somebody permanently. So the one thing I would say upfront, you know, this guy has been here for a while. We shouldn't think if we're going to make an acting decision, we should have made the decision and moved on to that quite a while ago and move on. My second point is that if, if we're going to look at, you know, making acting for approximately eight or so months, you've done research, looked around, you've seen a lot of people, don't make an acting, make it permanent. You know, this, this idea of making an acting and just keep pushing the ball down the road is crazy. We need consistency in this city. We need a city manager, we need leadership that's going to help the city better and get us past all of these financial issues right. The only final thing I would say to that is, as you've pointed out a couple of times, we have this financial issue that's been going on for a long time, instead of just making it worse.
I didn't say we're making it worse.
Okay. It's generous, in case you don't see it. So you may want to, if you're looking for their consistency, which I know you're looking for this war, is the right thing or do we need to change? Something that's going to change to make the city better, maybe a new vision, maybe something that we haven't seen before. It's something to consider.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Delory? Name and address for the record?
Good evening, council members. Michael Delory, Long Beach, New York. This is about process, not about person. You had mentioned that previous candidates had failed background checks. Has there been a background check on the current prospective acting city manager? And if not, why not? I'm assuming everything's fine. My concern is this. There's been a lot of media reports, conversations about improper bonding payments, payments made. I think earlier today, you talked about Commissioner Tagg, the acting city manager, has been inundated with audit responsibilities in addition to his other responsibilities. So my recommendation, if I was like a council member, would be this. Since this appointment is not effective until February 6th, which gives you a week to consider a clearance letter of some sort for the candidate. That's number one. Number two, is there a contract available for this position? Because he's an acting, he's a corporation counsel. Do you give him a contract for this position? Number three. And if I was counsel, you know, I would want a, an end termination date of this responsibility, assuming it becomes permanent. If it becomes permanent, then you want an additional contract. I mean, you have Ms. Diamond is an attorney, Mr. Mandel is an attorney. I, 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 I don't understand this.
There'll be no contract, so that clears out.
Okay. So is there a time ending date, starting the position until a certain date? Or it's just on loan, open-ended?
Resolution of this written does not include a mandate.
No, I know, it's written as a resolution.
No, no, I think we, we talked about it, there were the rest consent finally.
Are we voting on this tonight?
My intention.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to speak to the background check, when he was hired as a corporation counsel, there was one done in 2006, and then of course, we have 12 years of him working in the building. So, thank you.
So would you have all candidates performed a background check?
We, we didn't have.
Just to the finalists, just to the finalists. Because it was money, so we couldn't be doing that for every single candidate.
We didn't know him, he was from another place, he was not within the city. It seems much more difficult. Rob is a longstanding member of the bar of the state of New York, though I think that all of those things taken into account would leave this out.
Anybody else care to speak? Anyone wish to comment on the item? Yes, please, state your name and address for the record?
He's in Long Beach. When somebody goes, when he goes into acting, what salary does he collect? Does he collect two salaries, salary that he's working at in a new position?
No, the budget city manager salary, I'll forego the corporation counsel salary.
And is there going to be somebody working in the old position? Is that going to be vacant and how long is that going to be vacant?
Well, actually, I'm going to retain the corporation counsel title because I'm required to under the charter, I'm required to be the acting city manager. So I will still be the corporation counsel for legal purposes and for practical purposes. I think it'd be kind of difficult at this exact moment in time to extract me from some of these matters like ISA or England and whatnot. But there is, there is a plan to assert back in my office.
And when we reach out to a search firm, I know in corporate America, the search firm gets paid a portion of the salary. So it doesn't cost anything until you put that person in place.
So municipal government is working, it's a little different. It's a one-time fee and then expenses incurred. They don't, this particular firm that we talked to doesn't do a percentage, which was a shock to all of us. They do it actually a little differently, I guess because municipalities are run differently.
And how many search firms are out there that do municipalities or?
I think, how many on the last, I think, website?
Yeah, I compiled a list, it was probably 15 or 20.
And they all function in the same manner where you don't have to set it?
We only talked to the one we, we talked to.
Because it seems like very long, I mean, I've worked in corporate America my whole life, top CEOs go on a given place and.
This, this particular firm specializes in municipal executives.
Yeah, but I mean, they're all doing very important jobs and they're replaced. President of the United States gets replaced and he's doing very important jobs. So it's just making crazy to me. If the search, how long does the search take? Because right now, we're looking at two years. So can they go for two years to find somebody?
No, they have a timeline, what would be the timeline? It was months, three months?
Probably 90 days.
Three months.
I don't understand.
That wasn't to be, that was not a complete search. My understanding when we spoke to the representative was that it was about 90 days by the time we send them, we have to send them a list of our priorities and qualifications, and then they develop the, I mean, they do the posting, which we paid for, to the extent that it's charged. They gather up the candidates, they pull through them to ensure that the candidates that responded are proper and fit within the categories that we put out. And then the interview process begins. For example, when we did this search last time, the candidates were from far away. So we weren't able to just call them in the next week, they're long, considerable. And we had done, just so you know, when we did this search this last year, we did not engage a firm. We did it on our own. We posted the position, some candidates responded, actually a large number. We, each member of the council kind of pulled through, we worked off that candidate, and we went from there and did whether, depending on whether they were local or whether they were from out of town, we did either Skype or individual interviews. Not everybody was at every single interview for a variety of reasons. And then we made it even smaller list, and we did it come down to a candidate, but unfortunately, it wasn't the right candidate for us. And that left us in this position towards the very end of the year. And that's kind of where we were. We started earlier than December 14th, or the 20th, whatever the date was, it was a discussion that was safe, it's the one direction we were going. Particularly given that Commissioner Tagg wants to go back to the police department. He's been doing two jobs and serving the community in that way for quite a long time. And entering a budget season, which begins, the departments are beginning to put that together now. So we didn't, it's hard to bring in, for me, that was a priority of mine, whether we could bring in a candidate in the middle of a budget season. Because it's an extensive process to put together.
So I would say if you're just wrapping up, your time expired, so just wrap it up.
What's the fee the search firm has for raising it?
20, 23,000 plus expenses for candidates to travel.
Just quickly, the, it's right out of contract. The recruitment selection process typically takes 90 days from the time the contract is signed until a candidate is appointed.
So we're in this position over, basically, we're in this position over $23,000. Well, we didn't hire a search firm because it was $23,000. And if a search firm could resolve all of this, we're in.
The negotiation, the search firm started in December, so this is a recent, recent, this is.
But maybe a lesson learned moving forward, the next time we need someone at this level, we engage in the search firm.
The search firm actually, what usually happens is, once again, the search firm will come in, a member of the team will come in, they'll interview the actual counsel, and then actually then engage in conversation with members of the executive staff. At that point, that individual will create what we call an executive profile. And once they move to the executive profile, then they can begin the search, right? But we never got to that step. But we did ask, and I did actually ask the question about paying for the fee, because in national searches, that's what usually happens. But in this situation, they reassured us, they did not have to do that and that resulted to the surprise of President Ramo.
Just seems like a well-spent $23,000.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment on the appointment of Rob Alastair as the acting city manager?
Is he acting or?
Seeing no hands, Michael.
Seeing no hands, President Ramo, I'd like to, just an emotion on the floor to amend existing resolution in the fourth House where it states, whereas in order to maintain the continuity, the ability of government, it is desired the city council to appoint a new acting city manager after that clause. I'd like to propose and to hire Rob Alastair effective immediately to continue the search for a permanent city manager. That's the motion.
Second.
There you go.
No, because I don't feel comfortable naming Go as the only option for us. There might be other ones, we might be able to get a search back in the last.
All right, and I'll take the motion back. We just have to let the motion, go ahead, go with the front. Yes.
No.
No.
I made another motion on the floor, motion to amend existing resolution, which states now and to hire an executive search team effectively immediately to continue the search for a permanent city manager.
Second. Yes.
Run your big boy pen.
Appointing a new acting city manager and to hire an executive search team effectively immediately to continue the search for a permanent city manager.
I just, your concern.
Not having anything.
Just your concern.
We continue to move forward, we're listening forward, we're still forward. The search firm in place, whatever search firm we choose to, because we have not as accountable when we get on the terms, and we all have the right to give input to it. But at least we can put something in place so that the residents is almost accountable for our actions deeply. That's why I said.
I think the language is important to make on the vote.
Yes.
No.
Officer Delore, item 1 of the resolution, appointing an acting city manager to city manager. This will be not to decide that...
I will.
I will.
I need to make something, you know, like, you know, there's been some thing saying, you know, Rob is not some fire breathing monster. And if you have a chance to have a beer with him, I would suggest you do.
Red capital, huh?
We just have, I've had a different working experience with him than the other councillors. Clearly, they've given, given a lit, a long list of accomplishments. But I have to go by my interactions with him. In fact, just this week, I've had an interaction with him where I'm now considering, do I need to seek disciplinary action? But, so I've had a different experience. And I sincerely hope what councilman, in my opinion, this is a dumb deal. And I sincerely hope what Councilman Morando said was correct and that my concerns are unfounded and he turns out to be a good diligent acting city manager. But my decision has to be based on my experience up to this point. And because of that, I have to vote no.
First, I want to thank Commissioner Tagney for doing an outstanding job, hence as well, but still doing an outstanding job. You shove this city through a budget season, the summer season, which began crucially to this floor. I don't think that they won't answer very properly.
Hey, I'm very disappointed because I really made the attempt for all of us to collectively move forward with the appointments this evening. And we just missed the opportunity for all of us to really vote together. I'm very concerned about that and it's unfortunate because obviously, for me personally, I don't really have any personal issue with respect to Mr. Agostisius. Although, again, people have said all these other negative things, but I only have positive feelings with them. But I'm concerned now because we're actually voting to move forward without any controls in place. And that was the main reason why I asked all the questions at the beginning. What can we do to work together? And for us to actually put something on the floor several times and change it, and for two members of the council that still might be willing to work with us, this again gives me the indication that nothing has actually changed. And I was really under the impression that that's what we were trying to defeat now. And it's unfortunate because now I can't trust the process because there's, you don't have any controls in place. You just have a blank statement. And that's not fair to Mr. Agostisius. It's not fair to the residents who came out this evening. It's not fair to us because we really, for one, we were trying to have a conversation and put a resolution on the floor that could work for everyone. So with that being said, I'll just have to vote no.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank our acting city manager, Commissioner Tagney, for your service during your entire career, but in particular this time where you served in two positions. I've worked with you on a number of different issues and I appreciate the relationship that you've built while you were in this position. With regard to Rob, Rob has served our city well in his tenure as his incorporation counsel. Incorporation counsel, I think at the beginning, Councilman Aramo listed all of his accomplishments and didn't even reach it, I believe, in every single one of them, because there are so many. There's a reason that so many people who are in this room who've worked with him diligently and are here to support this appointment, because they believe that he serves, he would serve our city in the best way. And for that, I'd have to vote yes.
I think it's a big honor for the city and I think everyone here will come to understand that Rob is going to be an excellent leader and an excellent acting city manager and hopefully one day city manager. My problem with the amendment this morning was that it's effective immediately going through the budget process. I don't think that's appropriate. I'm speaking, I'm speaking, I'm speaking. I just don't think that that was appropriate to add that into the budget at that time. So it's my greatest pleasure to vote yes. I wouldn't say it affected February 6th, but the new incoming acting city manager, if he has anything he'd like to say.
Thanks, thanks everyone. Thanks for appearing with us through what was unsure, a question I wanted to ask anyone and anyone can. Sorry, I'm trying to keep my voice up in the weather. But thank you again. Obviously, we all know what it means when a lawyer tells you that he has only a few brief remarks, but I actually mean it. I'm going to be speaking a lot in the coming weeks and months, so there'll be plenty of time for one of these speeches. But I want tonight to be about something else. And what I mean by that is I want this to be about you, all of you. But first, I need to start by thanking the city council for their confidence, for the validation of everything I have tried to accomplish here. I know this has not been easy tonight, this year, or for the last few years for that matter. But there's something that is starting to emerge, I think, and what I hope that is is hope. You're the ones who are going to provide that for this community. It's not me, it's you. And my first job as acting city manager for a cap for a long amount of this is to give voice to and fulfill your vision. I can promise you that I can do everything I possibly can to deliver and to make it better. Now on to our workforce, Fire Chief Joe Riller and all the volunteers who came out in the cold today and who are always there for every man, woman, and child in the community. We have been through some wars together and this is the latest, the greatest frontier that we will face together. I also want to thank PBA President Rockwell Walsh, Vice President Norman Corbin, and their members who came out tonight. I've been incredibly fortunate. I always enjoy a great relationship with the police department and the PBA. And I want to say this, you have someone upstairs now that, and you did before too, who truly appreciates what you do and what you bring to this community. As I've said a million times in a million different ways, there is no city without its police force and don't you ever forget that. I see and also want to acknowledge the remarks by L.B., PFA President San Pinto, and some of the other members that may be in attendance tonight. Things haven't always gone smoothly with the firefighters union, but if tonight stands for nothing else, let's stand for the power and the potential of the beginnings. Lastly, I owe a special thanks to CSA President John Rooney. We owe this eloquent Vice President Norman Wilson. We owe all our CSA members, all the ranking files and employees who have never, not for a single day, ever gone unappreciated. For the duration of my employment, I have never technically been a CSA member, but in my heart, I have always been a CSA member. That's why today isn't about me stepping into the city. Today, we lead the city. We shared a bunter together for all these years and I can't wait to begin this new journey with all of you. There are so many others to thank, obviously. Roger Clayton, London's Law and Health Federation, thank you for coming out today. And Mr. Erasich from the Nassau Building Trade Council, thank you so much for coming out of your remarks, very hard on us. Also, this is going to sound a bit strange, but I want to thank all those who voiced their criticism of me tonight. And although it wasn't always easy to hear at times, there is something I want to say. First, as one advocate to another, I applaud your passion for this community. It's now my job to change your minds and that's exactly and precisely what I intend to do. From one resident to this, the Oriole actually, you mentioned that sometimes you need to just let the residents vent. You're a hundred percent right. And I sometimes need to suppress my lawyer instinct. I do fight very hard through the nail for every cent for this city. And I knew it. And frankly, it's something I can stand to get better at and I know you and others will help you behind these times.
Never personal.
I know, I know. Next, Commissioner Tagney, there are no words to describe the level of sacrifice that you've made this year and over your career. Everyone here, myself especially, is a new dad. The whole City Hall team, I can't mention everyone by name, but my court team and court counsel is the only reason I'm here today. Everybody, Greg, Ridge, Chuck, Janet, Matt, consider Robin, Richie, and Ray as part of that crew, and Cory who took a chance on hiring politically unconnected non-residents who knew no one in 2006. Same goes for Eddie Eaton, an individual from whom I learned more in one year than I learned from everybody else from all of you. Of course, my mentor and my friend, the late Charles D. Van, who had the biggest heart of anyone I have ever met, Bill Popper, my own legal advisor, frequent mental health professional, along with Phil Miller, Seville, and my one and only rock, Andy Abrams. I know I'm not beating you guys, but, and I don't want to come across that way, obviously. In the recent years, as I've been getting some losses, I've come to learn the importance of saying things out loud before you have fun. So, thank you. Thanks especially to my wife and my kids. Maybe if you're putting up with me, it's going to get a lot worse. Somehow, despite never being politically active or been affiliated here in the city, I have been given a fair shake time and time again, who here could possibly, in a million years, be in a position to thank diverse lie such as Steve Cohen, Tom Sopio, Jim Hennessy, my dear friend, I think God, and John McLaughlin, Lenny Remo, Jackson Ewing, Jim Moriarty, Chairman Jacobs, and the rest of the county leadership, all in the same breath. I owe all those people that a gratitude. I don't know anybody else who can lay claim to that. The least common denominator is not me, however. Politics may sometimes be a blood sport in this town, but these individuals all have something in common, and it's that they care. As crazy as things, sometimes God will still get, they never stop caring about this place, its workers, or its people. The team here is just like the city itself. It consists of the most dedicated, passionate, opinionated, pugacious, and ultimately good-hearted people I've ever encountered. I've been here for 12 years and for all intents and purposes, this is the only community I've ever known. And so do the residents. I say this, I promise I will be the best steward I possibly can for my community and yours. Yes, we have fiscal crises, audits go large, inadequate revenue streams coupled with rising expenses, but we have a core team here upon which we're going to build very rapidly that is going to watch and keep this amazing city, not only for you, but for those involved. It's now my job to prove it to you. I understand the opportunity I've been given, I understand the responsibility that goes along with it. For the taxpayers and the residents that I've always been serving, I won't let you down and I'm looking forward to getting some, thank you.
All right. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and especially thank those outside the boat. Please get home safe. The roads are kind of slippery out there. I'm sure there's black ice, so please take some extra caution. Thank you.